Okay. Uh, you guys all set? All right. Okay, everyone, it is six oh five. I am calling this meeting in to order into session. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance followed by a momentous fact. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, the God, and the people of America. Now, on the sound, think about those that have gone. Thank you. Okay, roll call vote. Presidents. You hear Andy?
I'm here, the boy, the acoustics in that room, I can tell you, online are terrible.
Yeah, we need like, we need like six microphones to really do it right. So what I'll do, Andy, is as questions or things come up, I'll just relay what, uh, what trustees or other folks uh, have said.
That's fine, thank you.
All right. Um, we're gonna move forward. A couple of quick announcements. Number one, we had a request to use the gazebo in Wood Park on October sixteenth, a Sunday, uh, at two P M. for a wedding. Uh, trustees, any issues? Getting married there, Andy, no festivities, probably twenty-five, thirty minutes tops. Um, trustees, if you're good with that, I'll entertain a motion. All right, by trustee alter, second by trustee Ryan for the discussion. All in favor? Poser abstentions. All right, carries also, and Kevin, you'll have to correct me if I have this information wrong. Um, Huesick Falls Fire Department will celebrate their hundredth anniversary on Sunday, July third. It'll be a parade at one P M., after which they'll be at the athletic field on Barton Avenue, where there will be concessions, displays, the band refrigerator starting at five fifteen, and fireworks display at nine fifteen. Is that all good? Okay, I thought some things had changed online, but I think that was just updated. Okay. Okay. Um, we have one presentation. I forgot, uh, when I put the agenda, I put none, but we do have Deb Teeter, sorry, Deb, uh, from the Cheney Library who wanted to come speak to us for a moment. Uh, actually, if you can come over here near this audio, that will pick up the audio really well, and you can just kind of address the board uh, that way. I'm gonna switch the microphone over to that microphone, so people at home can hear you.
Okay, I'm here this evening representing the Cheney Library and, um, here to give you our annual report for the year twenty twenty-one. We, um, are beginning this year to celebrate our community band anniversary. The Sword of Stone for the Cheney Library was laid, um, in October of twenty twenty-two. And so between October of twenty twenty-two and, uh, so the November of twenty twenty-three, we'll be doing a variety of celebrations in the community that will include, in November, we're bringing back our REACH auction, we'll be doing that. Um, we, I guess, have talked to you before about our little Cheney libraries that are going to be installed around the building. But school is almost done with making those sources and a nice collaborative effort between the library and the school. And, uh, so you'll just see things in the newspaper. Uh, I'm gonna have, uh, gala at the end in November of twenty twenty-three. The plan is to get local, um, crafty artists kinds of people to paint and decorate their local places. And those will be auctioned off at our gala. There'll be another fundraiser for us. Twenty twenty-one was a year we once again were very fortunate to obtain a construction grant from New York State, which meant that ninety percent of our project that we did was funded by the state. We only had to come up with a ten percent. That is, you may have seen, we have a new handicap parking lot and handicapped accessible ramp now. We did some land saving. We did add air conditioning in the basement. We did some exterior painting. And so, um, we're in great shape at the library. And if you are not availing yourself of the services of the library, you should be. There are so many wonderful, wonderful things there. It isn't just about books. We have, um, internet twenty-four seven. Actually, you can go down there in the middle of the night and be outside the, uh, in the parking lot and access it. And, uh, you know, there's C Ds, there's magazines, there's newspapers. And if there's a book or a DVD or something that you want, you just need to ask. And we have access to the entire Upper Hudson Library system, that they can hand it to us within days. So if there's any book or material that you would like, we also offer lots of programming for children and adults. And please, come and see us and use us. It's a great staff and a lot to offer the community. Does anybody have any questions? Yes, Mr. Martin.
Books on tape are really popular with their kids.
That's right, we have books on tape. Well, I'm Yep. Well, yes, and you can download ebooks, there's all kinds of ebooks. I think we have ninety-six thousand, access ninety-six thousand ebooks. Just amazing, um, the number of books that you can have, that you can download on your Kindle or your phone or whatever device that you can. It's a great way to, you know, catch your books without even having to leave the house. Of course, during the pandemic, it was wonderful because you could get the, uh, get the books without needing to go to the library. So we do still offer curbside service for people who still are not comfortable with coming into the library. So they have a piece of small library, sell them up if you want, and it will be put in that on the shelf outside the door and then pick it up there.
I have a couple more questions.
Yes.
Like, how old do you have to be these days to get a card?
Five.
That, when my daughter, there used to be eight.
Yeah.
And my daughter, when she turned eight, she said, let's go. And I'd go out and get a ticket out, and she got a card, and she went to her mother, and she went to Upper Hudson. She had access to the world.
Yeah. Yeah. And, uh, the good thing about, you know, the card, uh, is it allows you to get books from all libraries, not just in the Upper Hudson, but you can even get books from other libraries as well, if you have anything that you can order. Now, these books, CDs, videos, all kinds of things like that.
That is the REACH, you're at the same night as the gala or is it just a
No, there's like two, they're kind of bookings. The REACH one is the beginning of, no, I don't think the actual date has been set, but I think it's gonna be the beginning of November of this year. And the bookcase one, where we'll be looking for artists to paint things, will be in, um, I think it's November of twenty twenty-three. So we have a year long of, a year long celebration, is what's happening. Yes.
Um, with the, uh, little library, uh, with Cheney or
It's, it's a collaborative effort. Do you work on them? Thank you. Yeah, we had our, um, bookshop from the high school and the art classes. Uh, worked to design the little Cheney libraries and make them and then paint them. And so as soon as they, do you know if they're done yet? If everything's set? Okay, so we'll have to make arrangements now to get them installed, uh, various places around the community.
Awesome.
Great. So thank you for your time and you're free to stop by and, um, and when you do stop by, if you haven't already, give the director your email so that you can be on our theme, Hughes letter that comes out once a month, telling what the different activities that are going on for people of all ages.
Awesome. Thank you, Deb, and apologies again not having you on the agenda. We reached out weeks ago and we're like, yep, it's good, then I just forgot to put on the agenda, so my apologies.
And from time to time, we do offer workshops on that to people, show them the how to use it, if it's more than you know, if you can. And that's important, people think of it when you listen to those, but for my very community is free. You know, you can access all of these materials, it does not cost you anything, well, it costs you your tax. And we, we do support it that way, and we're very grateful for that. Yeah, it's, it's all free, your library card is free and all the Oh, I
Right, then, here we go.
Hey. Andy, just, uh, just curious, how is the audio at home?
Uh, I can hear you very clearly. Uh, I could hear the speaker moderately, but the other trustees that spoke, it's, it's muffled.
Okay, um, that's, that's fine, we'll just, I'm switching mics between here and there, and when we have people who share, I'll just have them go over near there so everything can be heard. All right, thank you, Andy. A couple of quick updates. Um, first off, we're still looking for a member of the zoning, a member to add on to our zoning and planning board. If anyone's interested, please reach out to the village office or Marie. Uh, Woodsbrook Home Buyout, oh, yeah. Yeah, sure. Do you know who the chair is right now?
We don't have chairs, we, we
Okay. Great, Woodsbrook Home Buyout, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, we just signed off on the, um, what asbestos abatement, what did we sign up on? What I Okay. Okay, do we have it, do we, we don't have it scheduled yet? Okay. Andy?
The first thing that was the
Okay. Um, Andy, we're, we're getting really close to the deadline. I know Neil was talking to fencing people, and the earliest they can come is June thirty. So we may need to be in touch with the state this week and see if we can get an extra month so that we can get the final building down and the, um, fencing in, uh, but that'll be a conversation for tomorrow, Andy, okay?
Very good.
All right, thank you. Uh, next, um, and speaking with Neil, um, I know Neil and Mark have been very involved with this. This is the Woodsbrook Training and Improvement. These are the two sites outside of the village within the town that will help with the flow of the, um, Woodsbrook as it comes into the village. Um, both sites are primarily done, and now they're basically doing their punch list items, uh, at both sites, waiting for some grass to grow and some other final things, and that will be wrapped up probably in the coming months. I think, Dad, Neil? No, all right. Uh, and finally, um, I just have a quick update, I wanted to show this, I saw this a couple of days ago, um, and thought it would, I think, just be good to show you guys how the First Street site is looking. I think it was June ninth. Um, I, I may or may not have been driving and recording very slowly with no one around, and I, of course, would have checked that, would never show that in front of officers, but here's what it looks like, uh, right now. As you can see, they've done a, a lot of work to add the sand, the soil and the fill, including up on the side where the track is. And there happened to be a train there, too. So again, just as a reminder, this was something that D E C ordered through all, all the various things going on down there, but I just saw that and thought it'd be good to just put it up there, so you guys could see that. What's that? Um, it is to D E C satisfaction. I don't think you can, I, I wouldn't be digging very far, but based on what they have there and whatever concrete padding was there, they were content with this work plan to cover things up, raise the soil up, leave things where it is. If we ever had to do a digging project, we'd have to be back in touch with the companies, but, but for purposes of right now, that's, that's what they're doing to get things, uh, I don't know the exact timing, I just saw this, I feel like it's within, within about a month or two. I feel like that's what, um, Ian from D E C said. Oh, yeah, those, those are all online and at, at the Cheney Library. And, um, it's about where all the, all those files are. Are we talking about the First Street site? So ask that question again. As far as I know, um, and Andy, maybe you can speak to this for situations. Oh, you probably can't see the video, can you, Andy?
I can, I can see the video, I could not hear that question, but I can see the video.
So the, the question was, um, specific to, uh, how, how do we know what they took out, the various hotspots, that sort of thing? There was a work plan that was put together. Um, do, do we know that they took care of the hotspots and all that stuff? And who would oversee that sort of thing when someone's doing a project under D E C order?
Right, so, so generally, under that program, hazardous waste remedial program, you're correct, Rob, there'll be a work plan that's approved by the department, and the department does oversee the implementation of that work plan. I'm sure there's been, uh, status reports and a final report that'll be submitted by the site contractors, and D E C will have to sign off on determining compliance with the approved work plan. So it's primarily under the department's review.
Okay. All right. Yes, and I think there were some trees they were going to plant in strategic spots where there will be able to take the trees on, not in spots where it's gonna like be cement underneath, but that was part of that work plan that they'd, uh, shown us before and no, it's not a village property, it's their property. We'd had some discussions about the possibility of the village taking on, but too many questions, things, things stalled, it would be great, but not at this point, they're just moving forward with what they've been ordered to do. All right, so trustees, any questions on those updates? Yeah, that, it's their site. Yeah, it's their site, so not only do they have to do the normal maintenance, but they would have to do whatever maintenance is specified by D E C, including whatever monthly, bi-monthly, annual things require, things are required to do. Even though they're a company that's pretty much out of, uh, mostly out of, uh, the United States at this point, they're still gonna have their own contracts and subcontractors to come on a regular basis, do whatever tests and things they have to do, report it back to D E C, that sort of thing. I do not know about what the fencing and security, uh, ideas would be for that. I would assume that it would be fenced off because it's private property, but I don't know. Six-foot fence? Thank you, Neil, it's supposed to be a six-foot fence. Great. Anything else? Okay, we are at the section of the meeting, people to be heard. Uh, standard, things apply, when called upon, please begin with your full name and street address. Share or speak to whatever you'd like to discuss. Um, I'll take a quick look to see how many want to share. For the purposes of, uh, the meeting, and by the way, these meetings are, um, video, audio recorded, posted online in case people want to review them again. Um, for the purposes of sharing, if you could come over here when it's your turn, near the mic, so that we can have things properly, uh, recorded and shared, that would be great. Can I have an idea of who would like to share this evening? One? Two? All right, you can go right here first. I'll save four minutes, go for it. Yeah, please call right over. Uh, no, over there is fine, it's fine. It's being close to that, that, um, camera back there is where the microphone is. That's all. Thank you.
My name is Dan Kusa, I live at Borah Abbot Street. Uh, last time I talked about the noise issue I'm having, we're having, my wife with our neighbor. Um, first of all, Mayor, thank you for your email earlier today, I appreciate the response. It's really stressing situation for I even tried and tried and tried to go through proper channels with all this situation to BS like the situation. But if, if we have to listen to that car radio booming and pulsating through our walls, then it's unfair that Rachel's gonna be listening to my radio, too. My wife doesn't want that, I don't want that, we're trying to take the high road, but we don't deserve this. See, we had a, a noise law, and it was sixty decibels. She'd be playing at fifty-nine, that's both then, and it'd be just as awful. And we'd be totally fine if we do that. This is what this is about, we should have a free pass to the answer. Even as we left the scene, we even chief last, and then our radio again. That's all I've got.
Sure. So, subsequent the, uh, noise that we had. So so there's such things in there. As we will get, there's some things that have happened. We, we have businesses in town, you know, businesses, right? But even hard, for example, so we're gonna have, you know, there's, there's things like that, that come up discussions, we're figuring out how we're committing system. So this, it's not just as simple as saying, you know, here's a noise law, not so, it is the sorry okay, even then, I think this part may be one of the, even if we also, we have a three, we still have to notice it. So it's not, there's no way it can be done in twenty-four hours. But it is something, I did talk to Jason about this, I said, you know, I'm so he's fine with it, he, you know, he's on the block every time. Another body, uh, they, body, I have some here, here. Ninety-three blocks out. Not scientific research.
You're spreading out the level would be interesting, a lot of houses, of course. You know, we do have a great container house. It's gonna be interesting, but we can get specific, so.
Sorry, I feel like this is our particular situation. Um, I feel like less about like the music spot, or it's just about
So one of, one of the things no, first of all, I mean, purposes of harassment, you know, they were first, I'd say. But of course, on that, it's subjective, right? And that's why we should not support. So we are looking at it. It's not a key give it, right? Give it, that's, we won't give it, that's some of the the band forty remember, when we look at it, it's like that's forty, forty thousand is real low, it was like a person speaking, it couldn't be arresting words.
I thought she was giving us the finger and all that. She's got she started with, uh, anybody harassing, one of the dates, if we
And they're not making any more. You know, we call this engagement, follow and follow, and there's like, we don't hear anything else that comes up. I'm so sorry, I called, we didn't make on, they, and we say, look, this is like, we're getting this all this other stuff, and we're like, we don't hear it. And it's like, what are we supposed to do? Like, what are we supposed to do?
After the last meeting, I called the DA's office. They told me that right now, she doesn't have any new cases coming out for so her pending case for harassment, maybe, uh, A O C D. Don't have, if she's good, at pretty time, like, uh, six months.
The problem is she does, she hasn't, she hasn't
Yeah, and I sent the latest, uh, finding the case report, I think that reported to me, and I said, could that but, but it not keep adding now, I don't know.
What happened really? Was it continuity or succeeding them on it? They, at some point, ended up not ignoring it.
I think it's maybe not be prepared, I mean, I mean, we're not the best, too.
Is the, uh, local position, what it means to the, uh, to the DA's office? What, uh, for all kinds of events, we don't, we don't, I mean, I mean, even if there's a local case of harassment, well, depending on the situation, it's harassment. I mean, consulting totally that, let's say, she said, she might knew that, she might knew that, that we're having to deal with it. So it's all, I mean, all cases, the situation, no communication. We may represent, we won't call the chief, but it's refraining
There's a quick story, we have to, we have to what, can't have any contact with or refraining
But I did intend to recall that we should, these contacts, the DA's office, they know that
That may be something that Paul should do, or be the order protection conversation at the DA's office.
Sure.
Okay.
I found some information, if I could have, uh, order protection accepted, but it's you know, a fire in the
And she's at the DA's office? The DA's office?
That's so.
Which one?
Yarul.
Yeah, that's the DA, when I called. I think they just talked to her, I talked to one of the the
So what needs to be done with the DA's, the, uh, order protection?
Initially, I mean, those are, those were conversations, who issued the order of protection? That, I don't the PD?
No, PD can ensure our protection, I think.
Early court, first part. Okay. I think it would make sense, we could put, uh,
That was by George Paul, George Paul, sure.
Okay. Uh, I think it would, um, make sense to ask you to review your protection, which I, the DA's office, see if that even
I wish there was more waiting for to do. Um I am very grateful for all of you guys doing all the things you've done in the past, so. That's just, yeah, you guys work on lots.
It, it's, it's tough because I think you hit the nail on the head with part of it, right? But it, it doesn't offset the vessel of the back. Shield and you mean something. The vessel or is that purpose of action? So, and the other thing is. We don't want to turn those on our own. So a lot of ground, maybe. Grasp.
But this is like the next thing.
No, I know, I know. I know, and it. Yeah, no doubt, no doubt. But we're trying to get it, it was like tailored to like some party. Uh harassing people as opposed to, we want to have a car application if you have a car. It's, it's hard. It's hard to be around a tailor or something. People who are, you know, intentional. So it's, it's not what we all. Some of them have to be more, more geared towards the harassment than the, that's why, because that's what, you know, something recorded, you can have pride.
Wait, you could just like, I don't know, the outside means some of this where it's like, it's like a more than two years.
No, you shouldn't have to go through this. I think that sort of development. It's a lot like. Big with the product, taking officer. John versus like.
Well, even with the vessels, I know I put this in the email that town laws not applying to the U F U by our own, we don't have a. Look, this is a vessel, so. Even though it's, it's, you know, a part of information, it doesn't empower them. We don't think that they're basically going to do what they can do from the laws around us. Which is what we're going to, yeah, adjust.
Yeah. And then town, of course, is a different place. I don't know, I love you, but if there's something, town, it's all right. It's spread out, you know, farm, you know, just different. You, I mean, she would have like makes, which were cash, which are farm, you know, but in the village, fortunately, you know. Quite close together.
Our laws provide for a measure, vessel measurement at the property.
What's that?
Our laws provide for vessel measurement at the property.
Town.
We taking any action on the, uh the code issues that? Have been discussed in the past? Or what did she say? Code issues that we discussed in the past at the property?
Uh I have not. I need to talk, I need to sit down and talk with Andy and make a plan. Uh it's. That's a question. So I believe it's an illegal business. I've never, I've never seen any vehicles that. I saw, I haven't driven a vehicle there. Parking private, not a great spot. Just can't open a business. At your house, from the village, without. Be okay with running.
Andy, I don't know if you heard that, but the question was, has there been any movement on code concerns at that location? And uh Mark said he would like to sit down and maybe with you about the possibility of it being a, what did he say it was, Mark? Or what, could be?
Well, I think it's violation of.
Could be in violation of zoning for um not having proper business stuff, so I just want to pass it on to Andy.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
We're in the garage, uh. Start motions.
Uh it's quite eerie. There's a little piece of it that does. Overall, I don't, I've seen much worse, but there's a little piece of it. It took care of a little bit.
I watched it here, like, something more to drink for me. It sounds like a farm.
Uh do you think so?
No, it's not, it's not. It's no, no farms.
Alright, thank you guys. Thank you guys as well. Um Mr. Martinus? Step on up to the microphone, please. Let me switch the mic over to you there.
Yes, it's our camera and also the audio.
Okay.
Those of you who don't know, my name is Jim Martinus. I am here as a citizen. I am not here representing my workplace. I want to tell you my story. I was here last month. And I was here because I come a year ago, more than a year ago, with an issue regarding a safety of soundings with some tanks on my, my property. I called, just so everybody knows what the place here, I did call the mayor four months ago in Fenway. It said that I would be coming to a meeting, that I wanted to get into head stuff because anyone blindsided me with this information. Uh I didn't go next month, but I came two months later. At that time, the mayor told me that he wanted some time to research what was happening, why nothing happened. I came last month and was left again with, I will get back to you after I research propane. I'm trying to understand how this can happen. This, thi- these tanks are eighteen inches off the line of our process. And some of the board members got back in, some of the board members after last meeting got back in. Uh one of them, one of them said that uh they, they checked out some of the code. And it looked as though it was up to the village, the municipality, to decide what that regulation is. Correct me if what I was, what I'm conveying is not, is what I was hoping. Told me that it was up to the village to decide what was deemed to be safe, what was deemed to be protection for these tanks. Which is what I said last month, because this is what the experts are, the expert that the village engaged. Told me and told the code enforcement person. That technically, this is up to the village. If the village decides that that five-inch wall is enough to protect those tanks, then that can be their code. And I came last month, but I want to hear the board, the good council vote, or tell me that they're okay with that, they have a protection for those propane. When those tanks went up, the code enforcement told me in my face that he told them, he told the neighbor, you gotta put bowlers up. Assuming he told them that because well, I assume there was a reason. I shouldn't assume, but I'm assuming there was a reason, I'm assuming that was sometimes over. No bowlers will put up. Okay, if you're told by the code enforcement person that do something and you don't do it. Is that it? Does nothing happen? Someone, someone has something against standards. You, you're forcing me to go out and get an attorney to protect myself. This is, that's wrong. I should not have to pay an attorney. It's bad enough I had to pay an engineer to come out to deal with another issue when there was no permit. Now you're forced to be go out and give an attorney. It's wrong. I pay taxes. This should be, I think, you've got a village attorney, you've got code, somebody should be able to look at this and say either this is enough or this is not enough. And I'm pretty sure the fire code would say this is not enough. So, I was told last month, Mayor, that you would get back to me. You didn't give a timeframe. Now I'm looking for a timeframe, because it's been a year and three or four months and there's still no resolution. I want to know when this will be resolved.
I don't have any new information. I know we've had some conversations with a bit of some things. Nothing that I've seen thus far has been given us the green light to emphatically one hundred percent act on something. Um not say it's not there. Um I'm sorry, I did not get back to you this month. As my school year winds down, I'll have a little more time. So I'm hoping that next week this thing will last. So I don't want to exaggerate. Um I hope they'll get back to you.
So, I hear what you're saying regarding your personal situation.
I appreciate.
But this is something that has gone on for a year, three months, or four months.
So if we, if we told them that we need ballots to, can't we enforce that law?
I don't remember telling that, but I have to back. Uh you know, we, we engaged, or I tried to engage with consultants. Uh that didn't, that didn't work out. Um you know, I waited for a while, I, and, and to get, get full time up there. So I personally, I would like to uh make another attempt at trying to get another consultant. I think that uh situation that uh arises to that. But I don't, because I'm really, uh you know, I'm not sure in my notes I said, I, that I told them, that we, the body is there. I may have suggested it. I don't know more than actually I would saw. So.
Is it possible to contact the person that came last time or do you, you guys?
I don't know. I would try multiple times, I've dealt. Now, he never, uh he never, he but that day, I did not feel like there was a pressing issue. So uh I, that's the other part of the business.
So if that's the case, that's the first I've heard of it. I followed up with.
You were there, you were there too.
The drive, the sense that him, if a mind point, Jim, was that there was not, he would, he did not see a significant issue like chance of explosion. You, you would have told me that you were waiting on this report to come in. Right, right, I'm addressing the board. Let me address some of the board. I had told that he would wait for this report to come in. Now, if there is nothing to be done from this report, why are you waiting for the report to come in? This is not the way it went down. The way it went down was, this guy said, this is up to the village. And it was up to the village. He found out, the board member found us out. Somebody should be able to tell me what the code is.
My feeling is, and I didn't judge, we don't have anything on books yet as to what. If I had a personal opinion I agree with you about, I think I talked to Mark, what's gonna come into play is a little grand father. Well, it's about if we change the guidelines or the rules. Which is, you know, I felt one. A pen there, I definitely think that I would rather see problems. But it's gonna be a little bit of that. I'm sorry, I just got back in the last time. That we'd like, for sure. We really got to address it, and then we're gonna have to look at everywhere in the village. And well, you know, the grandfather issue, you know, somebody put it in. It's a little bumpy, but I mean.
I should, I should, I should check the notes, because I know what I was told. So I'm, I'll assume it was in the notes and told.
And I know we talked last month about this. I know that Mark talked about how it's gonna get reached up all the time, and they just stopped getting in contact, and then they got the report. Um but we're gonna look into this.
What it is on me is a balance. So where is it going to be on the F P A?
That's right.
What, what's?
And typically, we do that, I believe. I, I think code.
What specifically is up?
Setting the guidelines of protection among. Three, the F P A. But the people that the N E C, you know, they don't, they have, they're basically leaving, leaving it up to.
Okay.
So Mark, there's no federal guideline thing, just, you know. What, if you can see myself, we're part of the other thing, but there's no federal guideline.
Who died, who died in the following position?
A lot of us. Sure, it gets pretty confusing. That's why I wanted to reach out uh to somebody who really knows this. To try and clarify, which is what I, which is what I did, the kind of the way that. Uh I, but I will say that I expected the report from that deflection, that it was not a DA's issue. So that would have been, what I was looking for in the report, but that was the sense I had.
But the bottom line is, we need something definite to act on, without something definite.
I would agree. I would agree. Uh still look to have a consultant look at it.
Alright, so can we, we make that happen then? Um I mean, we'll make it some front burner item.
There's gotta be, there's gotta be, there's gotta be some kind of standards for this. The people around a propane tank all over the area, they all have bowlers around them. So there's gotta be some kind of federal or state standards, say that, these are required.
Well, according to the F P A, it's up to me to tell them, except for, I, I can't.
If there's no guidelines, then there's nothing you can act on.
But they offer, they offer a little guideline, but it's up to the village to vet.
To adopt.
That's right. They are offering one.
Do you mean if they were sent back to us when he found? Um we'll sit down and.
We could adopt it. We could adopt it. He's got the heart of that.
Okay, well, Andy had a sign off about a minute ago, this is why he's joining us virtually. He'll be hopping back on as soon as, um he's freed from his other, other situation.
I think we gotta get it done this month.
Agreed, agreed. Should I have done last one, my problems?
A quick thought on that, though. I'm assuming, and I don't. But I'm assuming you gotta buy it, maybe issue a little bit, and I doubt that P A cares about the distance of property law. They, they're more about this, to protect like the balances and where they have to be and stuff like that.
Well, they make the property law, especially if it's a party area.
The property line, you know, especially for Holland. We have kind of a unique situation in this, but when you look at for Holland, it's a little bit simple, because there are setback requirements from the electric appliances and other house roof, um stuff like that. Uh the commercial area of the property right here, with the proximity of the underground tank, uh right next door. You know, and that short wall and, no, and I know they put up with four to fifty to get around putting up a thousand yard path. You know, so for whatever, whatever that gains, I did not know. I noticed there's more regulations, I guess, for a thousand yard plant, so I have other people putting up with forty fifty rather than five. If you allow, certainly that's some of the.
That's all covered in the code. I, I need your sense of covering.
I'm, I'm assuming that's what Jason has, the concrete blocks.
Yeah. And basis of what I could figure out, uh I got a complaint to be put in. Went up with measurements, and it is, I wouldn't be able to get out of the car. Situation here, much better. The rules say it's not. Well, that's not the.
So here.
It's all the cost, if I'm understanding, always, it's up to us to, to, to find what we think is safe, what we, the safety, level of safety that we want in our community. And to set those guidelines, to set those codes. And then we enforce them.
Review what's on the books, see what's enforceable, if needed. Any more, we figure out anymore.
And I have an issue with grandpa.
Well, man, it took words out, it took words out, like, first, grand, I would. It's a grand father thing. Because it's been contentious since day one.
Instead of safe, it's not safe.
Alright, my mom is getting um graduation next week. I'm hoping to get some time for that.
One, one fact, so we don't leave here on the down. Uh Charles Sheen owned my mother's house, twenty-one parts of that, so.
Twenty-one?
She's, yeah, she's gonna be ninety-two in July. She's been there since nineteen sixty-one, so, long after Charles Sheen. That's our, that's our claim to fame. And the other thing, I have a question, uh that people ask me, and I've noticed it too. You have year, you have uh summer hour with the W E forty. Year round. No reason for that?
Yeah, um it started with COVID. When COVID things happened, we switched to that. Uh we actually had some conversations uh this winter about switching back to the five days a week. Um now that we're back in the summer, we're probably going to maintain summer hours. Although we are having some discussions, but we're looking to the possibility of switching back in fall, but that's all to be determined.
I think that's a good idea. I do. I mean, everybody wants four, four day week, but it serves in the village. My staff as well. Alright, that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you. Alright. Uh moving on. Uh reports, uh treasurer's reports. Uh you guys have a ton of reports, or anything you guys wanted to comment on? Thank you, Bobby, sir, and thank you, others. Uh further discussion? For approving the treasurer's report? I.
Aye. Of sanctions or opposed? Carries, police reports. You have to arrest that man with the phone. Just kidding.
Um, everybody here, the numbers. Um, if all of you.
Yes, it's a lot. Um, we have six rats, one of them was separated, getting there to push it on page one. Um, the vehicles, uh, five through five or three or four. We had to have five or four drop the party. They have more not prepared. Uh, we might have a jostle, let me take that over to Barbara and Kirk. We'll have them take a look at it. Five to five, hopefully this week. Um, some of the activities outside of the law enforcement, part of this, we participated in the memorial day today. Um, one thing I'm looking to get, I discussed this with the mayor, is to see if we can try to get two officers and mechanics which is live. We might be touched with time. Um, you know, the last time we talked to them, they said they were full of platforms, but that's something we're going to decide to do.
Trustee's media open without setting, uh, builders out on social media. Better than said in, um.
I certainly, when we talk about that, I mean, definitely, yeah.
How about, uh, can you, but take, she, she's going to be. I think she's a little too young right now.
I think I also hear.
So, yeah, Paul, what's working next? Can you get that out? Thank you.
Do you have anybody, Paul, do you have anybody in mind at all?
I have a couple of names that are written to me. I just gotta put them off to the work of the snap or head talk to them. See if we can maybe get them in the review, you know, the, the code board, the board, yeah. Second, fourth, that.
Okay.
Um, one thing I'm looking for is to see if the bill to reimburse officer Fisher, officer Warren, um, for one short sleeve shirt, one pair of pants each. Uh, they purchase on their own, uh, they've been putting in a lot of hours. They only have one, one shirt, one pants higher than this. So I'm looking to see if the board will reimburse something to the boss.
I'm pretty sure that's covered in the, uh, contract, right? So I'll, I'll double check with the needs, but unless there's a hiccup, we'll do that as much as possible.
The last time, so Kevin said we have the identifications, question, she interned with the apartment for two weeks. Um, Lord of the Boxer Hudson, an officer Fisher, sent my slide to the police department, taking us for a lot to do that. She gained a lot of knowledge, which I didn't.
Um, that's great. That's great.
Other than that, I don't, I don't know.
And going for that, Paul, like eleven annual, is that dogs?
Um, I'm going to say the majority of them are dogs. Some of them are rabid, you know, oh, connecting, cats and whatever. Um, but the majority of them are dogs.
Paul, we've been down, trustee, uh, shutting it down in the lower church street block. It's selling out some, all the adventures in there. He goes to the apartment, uh, two unregistered cars and one car that had no, uh, inspection. So this one car had an unregistered, it says two thousand seventeen.
Where was this?
The lower church street apartment.
I'm, I'm not sure. I don't even know if she, what you got last, because I mean, I'm very wrong. There are two states on. I'll have the guy check the parking lot. Is that correctly? There was two unregistered in the church street block and one, no inspection.
Yeah, well, the one we had a lot of inspection, it's harder.
That was, wasn't that the van or something?
No, the van is gone.
The van's gone?
Van is gone by late, but now there's two others replaced.
It was on Colorado.
Colorado places were, one, so was it?
Two thousand seventeen.
The two thousand seventeen. I've gone around. It was chat.
Are those like overnight all the time there or there's, there's typically house there?
I think there are apartment, uh.
Lower John, or lower class.
Okay. And then Paul? Are you not looking for motion to do the police report? Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Dan. Further discussion? All in favor?
Closer of sanctions, carries. Thank you, Paul. Uh, code enforcement, Mark?
The local ministry with, uh, with phone.
About a little lady, uh, at an operation and I'm dealing with the report. Um, that's in the next phase of that project. Uh, like that, but I think I did it. When I came back from vacation, thirty one law complaints. Uh, followed up on, uh, I was at yesterday at the end and most of them have voted long. And through the seven hours of technical complaints and a few I have, uh, I think we've got seven now. And that is Jerry Red Ranger.
Paul, can you explain that process for somebody that had longer law?
So the process goes along a little bit like, uh, a normal code complaint. I issued no violation, uh, most times and it takes somebody thirty days to do it. Uh, for fixing it. They don't post the complaint. I issued a second of violation, it's second duty date. And then typically I'll issue a, uh, invitation to court. Um, with the law, I squeeze that down to ten days. You have to give them some time. The, the laws that are RSR, Jerry and, and Ranger are laws that we've been dealing with for the last two, three, four years. So with no, with no points, I'm really, uh, you know, stretching that out. For simple people, you know, it's a whole lot. It's, you need, you know, you need to give them a little bit of time. So I'm going to do it. I mean, uh, just guessing out of the thirty one hundred points I did, I maybe sent out five second look. So.
On the taxes, the charge, the cost is borne by the carrier at charge.
So this, for the properties, they will put them out.
Is there any fine involved either?
There is not a fine. You should go from the end and recharge the cost.
Would you think that you should possibly add a fine for that or would you?
Uh, I don't know about a fine because you're not really doing a court thing, but maybe a processing thing.
Well, in some cases, the people aren't in more than a long. They may say, well, if we have to wait, if he waits a period of time, say a month to get mowed, they're saving money where other people are paying every week to every two weeks to get the lawn mowed. So then in the end, they're, they're actually making a greater investment. Maybe there should be, maybe there should be a fine involved as well.
That's, I mean, I forgot on that adjustment.
Mark, along that line, along that line, what is it this dictates dependent periods and what is it the dictates like? Are there any specific local laws or codes?
No, it's just something I, I kind of adopted with something that's, what I feel is fair and reasonable.
Okay.
With the absence of any kind of guideline, uh, when it comes to law.
Maybe.
That's same for the normal, I, I adopted what I think is fair and reasonable without. So by the time you get before, I've already, you know, I'm already giving people ninety days, it's already been four, you know, uh, four more for an initial contact.
Maybe it's worth Kevin, if you can, if you can vote by that even further, possibly of adding final to the business if it's necessary.
Especially to see the cast of characters.
Well, the other parts, well, and the other part of this too, the, the New York State Code, I mean, so about what you specified eleven inches. So now I have to leave the grass and get to approximately eleven inches. I did find something in our local law that I used this year, the government's second part. They, the length of the grass, it was really, it has to be taken care of. But I did switch over and starting to manage the issue. Hopefully would help. In the event that I do have, you know, it would be great. We've heard about even for lawn, lawn, we just start, uh, you know, after the, the second notice violation, I would send somebody.
And then charge it.
It's under our jurisdiction, it's under the town director or, uh, our, our general, the county.
Uh, they, they actually got me called maybe in the village the other day and say they were getting somebody to. Somebody made a complaint. I can't, it wasn't happening officially. I don't know if it was Roy or if it was somebody else, but they did call say that they were following up.
I, I knew you complained your headquarters too.
All right.
That's in the service.
Somebody, somebody loved not to do it. They complained it spent pretty well this year.
What's that? What? Okay. Any other questions, Mark? Kevin, I will follow up with Danny on looking possibly of foot fine after this.
I mean, mostly except, I mean, those.
Work, a lot. There are a couple of more things. Long story, I think that's at the point of overturning the county. Hasn't been very helpful in giving that release to, uh, the personal issue. So I think we should begin that property. Which one? Number one, Saturday, which is a shame because it could have been turned over and made it worth useful property. It got to be dropped off.
So, yeah, Neil and I looked at that a little bit yesterday too and, uh, you know, that, uh, the pill of the time now is kind of, uh, come over a little bit. These are, uh, brick, this town's law. Uh, you know, there's a steel beam that's on the floor that's falling out of block, placing inside, something like that for a while. I mean, I, I fell off, I think because the county thing, which goes more about do something. I think that as a community, we need, we need to make that decision to do the process that we just did maybe with, uh, um, you know, the American House, something like that. Uh, but I think we're all fair that we need to have a county involved already.
Well, the problem is, I've got several correspondence with the county. And two years ago, they told me, you know, I think it's a matter of months and that never happened. I keep sending emails and maybe responding to the cases, like we kind of back in my, my worst case. They say, yeah, it's going to come to you soon. And that was, uh, six months ago and it's still nothing.
I remember dating the nation that probably well over a year ago.
I spent, I spent actually, how many, how many, it's been three years.
You know, we need to have an empty year watch, we've been having this before on, uh, and start with that and.
I mean, that would be the first step, right?
Well, I think it's the first step, but, uh, you know, you're talking about entering into that with the county, you know, it's their building. So, you know, I, I don't know. I mean, it is, it is, there is a issue that is not, it's becoming less and less safe.
Okay.
Unfortunately for the county, this is going to probably cost the county probably over three hundred thousand dollars to tear that down, possibly be.
Yep, which is probably why they're not enough to envelop.
But I'm going to just pass it down to somebody else who wants to take kind of responsibility for it.
Yeah, I, I don't think, uh, you know, and I just don't see how anybody can see that. Steel falling out, like.
Well, maybe they happened three years ago when the conversation.
I don't agree. I don't think so.
Yeah. The other one, there is the, uh, property on John Street, the, uh, the English property. I had a couple of lights from the neighbors next door with birds flying out again and bees and all kinds of stuff. I went property.
Yeah, uh, can't really, can't really discuss that tonight. Uh, but we are going to, uh, well, I don't know if anything about, maybe something happened.
I, I.
I missed the last court date, so I am not have checked the call to me and like, to see exactly if anything had happened. We are, we are seeking to have the engineer go back in there, uh, forward.
Well, I'll stand when he gets back, I'll, I'll tell him.
Do we have any, uh, recourse on the cars, assuming the doors all open out, we need to take the action to set?
We want to have one hundred vehicle, I was, I suppose, I mean, it's, it's an eyesore, they wouldn't look at it and that. Like it's looked a lot of a kind of, sort of, you know. I can look at it, it's like, why?
Is that the only like deficit I'm in shield?
Yeah, no, no, no.
Is it like, he thinks?
Technically, you don't say law, you're law of one hundred.
Oh, I, it's a follow up to a property on, um, the street that was established.
Okay.
Yeah, I reported one house, it's sort of two, and they had three junk cars and three, they're still there.
You say big time.
Yeah.
I have an inspection in a month.
Thanks. Great. What, what about the main street bills? That are all for me, David.
The church, it's going to be the name of church.
So that's going to come up later on the agenda. That's the, uh, the opposite. Um, I'd like to wait until Andy's back on, uh, to approach that, but that is only agenda.
Something keep in mind as we discuss this with that gesture in a little while. There is another one like eight Troy Street. I'd like to, uh, talk to go by the same name, same process. Eight Troy Street is one with a pretty far line.
Far line.
It's in an LLC. I'm not sure if it's going to court. It's normally a process of the violation, violation for, uh, bring, trying to bring an LLC to court, but if we can do what we're going to be doing by a fifty nine church street. If they have the same issue to do, uh, I think it may be the best way to handle that. The house and home and substantial care, that's one of the care. I think we can still save that, if we were to do, take action to make. If the owners keep not.
Okay.
And it would be the problem. With that, we put a name on the property, I'm seeing that with the policy.
Yes.
Well, that was in the last, uh, tax auction, this, that property.
That property was, someone else asked you?
No, I'm sorry. It would be a fifty nine, uh, church street.
You sure that was the one?
Because I saw it being a lot.
So seven thousand dollars in bad taxes for fifty nine.
Okay, I didn't see that.
Was it an option two eight? Right. What about the brick, brick building across from the, did that go with the option?
No, I tried to make information, but coming on that, they wouldn't give me any information. I said, you must have records on that property somewhere. No, we don't have.
Wait, wait, they didn't, they didn't put that on the latest tax office?
It wasn't, you haven't.
There hasn't been one.
I don't think it's that.
Except for the digits, the sign on the bill, I'm afraid, it really says two eight.
Last year.
Last year. They told us that that would be back on tax auction the next time it came up. But there's a, is it there one yet?
I don't know. It's supposed, it's supposed to be the spring and it's supposed to be July and it's supposed to be August. Now it's in September, so we'll call off on that.
Tell me what you busy down there.
It's because you go to the, the building.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Bobby, do you want to make that motion again?
Yes. I think, yeah.
Second, Dan, thank you for the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Prove of the sentence. Carries, put it forward. Report is approved. Clerk Devon, clerk report.
Copy text, they're out. Penance is coming in. Um, it's going through until we can have a line to the, uh, this company. We are new, that's a good report, that's a good.
Any questions? For that new copy machine?
Oh, man, I love it.
Sorry. I was doing it late last night for more, uh, break up.
Two sided copies, yes.
I doubt you.
Can we do that? Same paper and?
We can even use staples. Hold on.
This could be, this could be on two sided.
Yes, that's true. We'll, we'll do that. All right. Um, anything else? This motion approved, clerk Devon, clerk report. And Dan, thank you, Doug, for the discussion. All in favor? Aye. Closer of sentence. Carries, thank you. Highway, do you know your report? Bobby?
Uh, where's Neil?
Neil?
I'll see you here, Neil. I really like that.
How bad would the water, the water breaks to get worked out? I would have gathered that part. Thank you. Long, short, they didn't fix?
Two hour.
Thank you. Um, when you get the, um, the sidewalk posts, send them to Maria and go send them out to the board. When, when you hear this, I think you're seeing, uh, and doing what they're worth this.
There's also, um, so Kevin, I took a look, Walter, with that just in the other day, it's the whole three section. It comes with the one down at the parking lot by the river.
I, I said, you know, you know, top of the day.
The one I said, Karen? Yeah, it's a, one.
One is, one is broken, the other one, the other two that are requested by Ted Kytus for the, uh, point four plate.
So. Oh, one, one, you said the waterworks are going to be a clean, big comment this month. So that's the road will be closed off, finish it that day or?
No.
Okay.
All right. Any questions for me? For most of this? Highway report? Anybody want to add a motion? Thank you. Thank you for the discussion. All in favor? Close our sentence, carries, thank you. Uh, Sue report? Anything major, I think just kind of business, is mutual, though? Did you get the city department all set? So many steps for that, thank you, so many people, thank you guys for being on with that, and finally getting in, Delaware Sound. Unless you guys have any questions? Uh, this promotion approved, Sue report? Thank you. Thank you, Megan. Further discussion? Here, none all in favor?
Aye.
Close our sentence. Carries, and finally, water report? I don't think there's anything major to highlight, anything, right, this is usual. Um, one thing I do, I feel I failed to mention earlier, um, one of the things I wanted to add into the agenda tonight, um technically not necessary, but just because it's a thing where we've been doing, because we're on our do it, um, we have the hope for adding a couple phones and boxes over here for filling the same way we have in the public office. I'm going to add one more phone into that to replace the phone that's in the lobby, so that that phone can actually work, because we can, it's, it's beyond its last legs. Been fixed a couple of times, it's still cracking out. Um, and also, water, once it clears over, we're going to make sure, they did get the internet there, everything is cooked up, I spurred, so it's just a final step. Doing the phone, we're all set with that, I won't mention that. Looking for motion through the water report? Thank you, Doug. Thank you, Megan, further discussion? All in favor? Aye, close our sentence. All right, carries. Minutes, may not break any, I know we had a little bit of back and forth about some additions.
I can go with that.
Okay, any, any issues on new ones?
Nope. Could make more of a difference, Danny.
Thank you. Further discussion? All in favor? Close our sentence. Carries, did I say not to make thirty one special meeting minutes? Oh gosh, I have a list of ones I owe. My apologies on that, you're ready, it's going to happen later. Change my desk until I get to the app. My apologies. Trustee committee reports, we'll start down, I should start on this side, Kevin? The order of it out.
Um, just finishing up the Walter Wood project, I think. Eight benches left, we put out most of the month around the street. In, in, in this past weekend, we voted down three more. Twenty five dollars, people that don't even wonder, it's a surprising project, and ten thousand dollars we raised to put in thirty benches.
Nice.
They look great, they really, they look different, they look interesting, they look, they really look the same around.
Yes. That's right. Five minutes, absolutely. That's it, thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
And you, Doug?
I thought I was going to. I thought I was number four. You know, tools, huh?
Okay, so, um, yeah, talk, I think I'll mark about the uh the transportation work as, as the um, I'm too surprised, not as but um, he was on vacation, so I'm a while, because he's having such a great.
Enjoy, moving on.
Um, so we'll pick that up soon, and uh, a couple of people posted on Facebook, hey, anybody know, I've been in Spotsky, did you ever? Crash people from town, yeah, I used to go to uh, kind of, so, yeah.
Well, my one question came up uh uh like, maybe last week, uh, garbage strippers, at one time, the uh the town sold garbage strippers for the village. Is that a possibility that happened again? Or permits?
Yeah, I don't remember why, I don't know, it was after.
I think it might have happened back in the town, and it was a recycling program. If you're on that time, I remember two strangers, sell them.
Yeah.
At least you reported every month how many benches you sold.
We did set, we have set up together where I lock them through, and electronics, uh, flush and down. Yeah, but you're running out of.
You're going to need to find you an overhaul, you'll take all that time to try and get a supplier who are uh, they will not.
What's that date for?
I don't know. Uh, I just need that question.
David, you ready for this?
No.
Thank you, Megan.
I think I'm making for the water, the department, but they're getting a little focused.
Yeah.
Um, I know everyone about, talking about, how they park inside, if they go, they get back. And we'll talk to one of them. Yeah, I think that's, thank you.
And I have to leave down there when we get to Harvard discussion.
Okay.
I have to ask Kevin, do you guys have a couple of, so that's.
Um, if you saw Dennis, he was working on like, fracking, and he can call, that will help us forward it, so.
Great, thank you. Dan?
Uh, just to add in the, the sewer water, water, um, talking, if the thing, the water part, it's
That's the nice idea.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of super high mileage, but it's, when it only drops a square mile, it's a lot of power. Yeah, so, speaking to Josh, he would like us to find one to get uh one of those uh, would you open that utility truck, uh, you know, DC with fire rescue trucks, kind of the thing, you know, starts. Uh, so I want to robustly all those sales, to see if they had any, they ran out of this, like anything, uh, it's going uh in market, it's hard, they're just, they're just not available, like they are themselves for one model, I think. So, um, I love in my heart, I didn't know what was this part, it's that whole column, something to use in its whole life, which didn't, you know. Something like that comes up, I but I'm not sure if you're, you know, it's on that, as far as you can, the course, that option. Yeah, well, that's actually, one of the things, another part of mine, yeah, it's, you know, it's off the sides, it's state auctions, so uh, he was going to keep an eye out for, he seems that they just didn't mix it up, and it's kind of a first year, it's on itself.
Okay.
So before it goes to auction, so I, you know, obviously, we're certain to develop, uh, maybe just how these, I mean, I don't say that. But uh, I know. I know, I lost it, probably.
That thing's wrong, or it's, you know, possibly, um, purchase. Fire from a base, anything on the line.
But what if we bought from the state? I think, I think state contracts satisfy that, but we'll, we'll talk about it.
Yes.
You need to.
Yeah, I just, I can't imagine if it was, they would be told for that, it's state law.
You know, how does that work when you want to try to force underneath? A thousand dollars, you want, you want to try?
But you, we still have to get this for. And we started to. While we go, finally, it's taken this, oh, what you have. They can find it. I feel, I feel the way we did that one is we, we saw that the deal was there, so we put out a formal um, they're requesting something of that nature, we knew that would come back. I don't know if anything else came back, I think we had like, one other thing, was like, strategy to hide. And that's how we want to do it back, okay, if you check it in. All right. Uh, Dan?
And I can see.
Thank you. Bobby, one?
Uh, the one guy, just the one that felt the police officers, and I don't think it would be somewhere else, I don't want to get shorted.
Yep, that's on the agenda. Um, there's, yeah, we'll jump to that, sure, okay. Uh, Bobby, two?
In the finance world, all this, nothing ever report. Those are me and hey. Um, yeah, we're going to talk about.
Yep, okay. Great, thank you, guys. Yeah, before we go into business, students, we typically uh allow you guys to exit at the hour and a half mark, which is about there. So if students are here, know something, and need to sign off on something? Unless you want to stay, it's totally fine.
I have every student on, so I'm, I'm just going for it, I'm on.
Well, that's fine, I'm on for it. Are you guys all seniors?
Yeah.
Oh my God, you're last senior after the last day of class. I need about some time. You still have anyone? All right.
So just before, yeah.
Seniors, I'll see you in a week and a half. So I'm getting a lot of school to teach, again, in fact, in the back in the. Graduates, okay, new business item number one, bond resolution for the lead Jake collection and pump, uh, pump system, we have two of these. Um, I spoke with Denise just to get some details on that, and I put them on the uh agenda, we originally passed the first of the two bond resolutions in April twenty one for a hundred sixty one thousand six hundred fifty, uh, this will be originally paid over five years, our goal's simple now, is to take that same debt and move it to be uh paid over twenty years. Uh, so with that in mind, you guys have any questions on this? We, um, this is standard bond stuff that we've done in the past, um, there's way even first year to the bonds that set it, and then actually you can kind of revisit it, this is kind of all we've done that we've taken, just um, by doing over more years towards the uh cost of life, a more time, that sort of thing, and we use uh, I have an org, I think, where, in all New York City. We've been using that for all of our bonds, have the relationships for most of my five hundred. So, um, like, we could, if you wanted to wait till any, uh, as fast we could, um, it's, um but this is kind of just sort of normal fair stuff, so I'm going to go through, I just, yeah, I would, I would, we're divided on twenty years for such a small amount, relative. Um, because it allows us to pay off gradually, breathe up things that aren't our budget to be elsewhere on a one media basis.
So what's the payment go from, like, say, what, what we, what we go from extra, uh, two thousand one to five hundred, or should be a lot less than that, than the old four times the year?
Um, I don't have the exact one on this one, I did get the exact one on the other one from Denise. Um, the sewer back truck, I think I just sent that out to her before the meeting, um, the sewer back truck was a different amount, I want to say, about a hundred and ten thousand, we did um, and by switching from, for that situation, uh, from five years to either fifteen or twenty, and gave the annual payment is seven thousand three hundred dollars, as opposed to what it would have been for a hundred and ten thousand over five years, which would probably be about twenty two, twenty three thousand. So basically, it just allows us to, to pay off.
Three hundred and sixteen thousand, I mean.
In excess, yes.
What is there to the next range?
Uh, I cannot, I think so. I don't, I don't think so, um, is Duke still there? Can you see if Denise is available for questions on the bond resolution shots? Thanks. Great. Um, just while we're trying to get on the phone for the other sort of mass, this, this would be a resolution amending a bond resolution adopted by the Board of Trustees, built in the fall of Rensselaer County, New York, in connection with improvements to the lead Jake collection and pumping system at the landfill site, in enforcement of the bill to extend the maximum maturity of bonds authorized to be issued beyond five years. But whereas they went through when we adopted the resolution on April twenty, twenty twenty one, for a hundred sixty one thousand um, whereas the bond resolution restricted it to maximum five years, whereas it is now desired to remove such restrictions and authorize financing over a period uh, of probable usefulness assigned here too, and therefore be resolved by the affirmative vote of not less than two thirds of the voting strength of the Board of Trustees, of the Village of Rensselaer County, New York, it's called, section one. Zoom in to get, and see this a little better, does that matter? The bond resolution set forth, the three elements is hereby amended to provide a maximum maturity of bonds therein authorized over twenty years, and will thus exceed five years with respect to the issuance of the bonds authorized therein, section two. Upon this resolution taking effect, the same shall be uh published in full in the official newspaper of said village for such purpose. Together with notice, the village clerk in substantially the form provided in section eighty one of the local finance law, which they brought in for us already. Section three, this resolution is adopted, subject to permissive referendum. Uh, so at this point, we need uh someone to offer the resolution and second it, and then we can have further discussion. All right, thank you. Hi Denise, I got you on speakerphone.
Okay.
Wow, this is louder than the other thing, this phone is amazing. Um, we had questions on the first bond resolution, lead Jake system, it's a hundred sixty one thousand six hundred fifty, originally over five years changing to twenty years, we're looking at generally what the, the change in, um, what were the questions going, what the new pay would be approximately, and what else, but so much more of a cost.
It's going to be a hundred sixty five thousand, divided by twenty years, so that'll start twenty three, twenty four.
Is there an interest rate?
Uh, apparently, it should be out there, should be out, but correct, the rate should be out there. We can add a short term, after five years, we have four years left, and that will go along for about the remainder, I think, fifteen years. They'll still pay interest, and they'll still pay principal, and interest will be checked.
Same interest rate or different interest rate?
It will vary, it will vary. Over here, we were that, until it goes long term. We can lock it that year, actually.
So is this a varied rate right now, not, not, not a lock for rate?
Oh no, it's locked in, ours is locked in, every year, every day, we'll be at the same rate.
Is the interest rate now better than the, the one previous?
Now, it's going up. That is, it's the last one.
Okay.
By the end of five years, it could be pretty well backed down to what it was last year, or, we're all hoping. But it, it fluctuates from the time that, every year, every day, it's the same interest rate.
So.
We made that present a little series starting in twenty three and twenty four.
So right now, we're locking or curving over five years.
No, 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 not for five years, it renews every year for the first five years.
It renews every year for the first five years.
Yeah, every year for the first five years, 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 they're going to go at different rates, so we decided to go long term.
No, we, no lock.
So like those long term, that we decided, well, that's all this is generally how the bond resolution is getting, it's just, um extending the couple of years, so it's payback period for the five years, onto twenty years of the lead Jake situation. And five years for fifteen years for the sewer back.
Both these questions?
One part.
Well, wait, is, is the, is the sewer truck going to last fifteen inches?
No, this isn't, this isn't the sewer truck, but that, that's another.
No, not, it's a bleach it, sewer truck.
No, no, it's a bleach it, sewer truck.
Being able to run the same way, but there are two different forms.
Okay, so, so right now, uh, with the lead Jake collection one we're talking about.
Right.
We can renew it every year over the first, what, five years, you said?
Right, so we have four years left.
Okay.
We're looking to go long term.
And now we're looking to go long term?
Twenty.
Over twenty.
So we're just wondering what the interest rate would be if we go long term? Maybe they're gonna go to the standard higher, so we, you know, if it goes over twenty years, you don't have to pay that much, like, over twenty years.
Right, I mean, you can go long term, the next time you renew it, which will be at one case, I mean, in July, or whatnot.
So if we go long term, is it lock-in or we're renewing?
We're locked in for the year until it renies.
We're locked in to one year until we renew again next year.
Why, well, why is coming up?
Which one is on?
It was a time to trade, you know, we were trying to really get it done, um, to extend that, the period of, uh, the payback. So we didn't see it suddenly. Uh, when it comes high, sort of, you know, the interest rate is, it's gonna lock in. But right now, you know, in July, I mean, and, you know, who knows what's going out, I mean, that's four years.
So, so this isn't locking in to the current rate, this allows us to continue to look every year, see what the rate is and, and either lock in on that.
That's right, yeah, why we would be up with the E-bank idea and how you do it, it's always great.
So your, your thought is we can do this so that we continue to have the ability next year to see if the rates are better in lock-in or keep doing the annual renewal?
No, regardless of whether or not you lock it. Um, yeah, we still have the same scenario for the interest rate. It's all in a plan, this contract version extends it from five, five years to fifteen years. Um, okay, lock it around. Um, so that I can, like, take your thing, I'll let it happen over time.
Okay.
Which is what I'd say right now, if people can't start out being five years, if I need to, if I'm like a smaller and my finance law, maybe that would be much better for this, I mean, uh, their probable usefulness, probably uh, how they need this, how they like this, or the sun, like, they're like, uh, a lot of the, the payback. So if they don't hear this, uh, a mandatory financial condition, well, we will be locked into the five-year payback rather than the fifteen, for this, and then one year for the other. I really, I would change anything if you still can do the same thing. The same, uh, uh, the this is totally for the same, uh, payback period.
Okay. So there are no doubts? Okay. Alright, thank you Denise.
Okay, bye bye.
Bye.
Bye bye.
You can call that. Alright. So I hope that makes some sense, some sense, general sense. Um, I think there are bond needs and I'm still like, okay, I think I get it, again. Um, uh, but Denise is looking for us to do this. Um, we have all the procedures set, um, through, uh, time hires. Uh, I've been through the resolution, so I'm looking to, uh, have someone offer it and second it.
Hold on, second.
Thank you, Bobby and Bobby. Uh, any further discussion on this? This is a reminder, because the financial law does require the two-thirds, uh, vote. Um, yeah, they only have five spots, but we're seven. Um, any other questions, discussion? Alright, can we do a roll call vote please, please, boys?
Mary.
Yes.
Thank you, Mary.
Justin, I'm sorry.
Okay, Todd, it's not for you all. Justin, Albert. Just. Trusty Becker.
Yep.
Trusty O'Callaghan.
No.
Trusty Shetty.
No.
And Trusty Dollar. Thanks.
Do you have something?
I get to say that.
Oh, then.
He's the first one.
See, he's trying to be exact. No, it's bottom. Uh, but that's okay. Alright. The permissive referendum notice will go out um, once that period ends, if there's, I think there's no objection from the board. Okay. Back to the second of these. This is a similar, uh, approach. This is for the purchase of the sewer back truck. Uh, originally, when we did the sewer back truck, and this was the thing that I asked with the dev back truck and the dev, uh, that we got the Eno information out from Denise, which was the initial price of the sewer back truck of a hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars. We paid eighty from, uh, village funds for that, which left the remaining hundred and approximately a hundred and ten thousand. When we did the initial ban, as you said, it's, uh, for a period of over five years. Um, we're looking to extend the probable usefulness payback period, uh, to fifteen years. And that would make it seventy-three hundred dollars for fifteen years, starting on next fiscal year.
Yeah, how much do you usually get out of that truck so far?
Oh, good. We've been using a few bike stores, but it's like, now, ten days.
Thanks. Alright. Uh, so this is the resolution running the bond resolution adopted by the Board of Trustees, the Village of Falls, Rensselaer County, New York, in connection with the purchaser. We will add a C by the letter. Of the sewer back truck and enforce that village to extend the maximum maturity of bonds authorized to be issued beyond five years. Zoom in a little bit. And again, whereas statements, August twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one, is when we did the initial bond for a hundred nine thousand two hundred and seventy-one. Uh, such bond resolution restricted it to five years. Now it's desired to remove such restrictions and authorize financing over a period of probable usefulness. Uh, result, now therefore be resolved by the affirmative vote of no, not less than two-thirds of the voting strength for trustees, the Falls, Rensselaer County, New York, as follows, section one, the bond resolution set forth in the preamble is hereby amended to provide that the max of maturity of the bonds therein authorized over fifteen years and will thus exceed five years with respect to the issuance of the bonds authorized therein. Section two, upon this resolution taking effect, the same shall be published in full in the official newspaper of said village for such purpose, together with the notice of the village clerk in substantially the form provided in section eighty-one of the local finance law and section three, this resolution is adopted subject to permissive referendum. Uh, required to read out those, those law. Uh, I'm looking for someone to offer the resolution and second it. Need someone to offer it.
Who'll offer?
Thank you. Sorry, Neil, you can't be the second. Anyone want to second us?
I'll second if you have a question.
Alright, thank you, we're in discussion. Um, same approach, same thoughts.
This, this, I, this, I don't understand the concept of trying to pay for it in fifteen years, but it could be, and I'm not saying it's going to be, but it could be above his goals in five years, out of, you know, ten years, I mean, I can't see spending the payment on a, on a vehicle for fifteen years if we, we, you know, signed up to go for five right now, I understand the idea of the, like, bringing the money in the village, but to me, it just seems like you don't even know if it's, you know, the operational, what maybe fifteen years?
Isn't it a pretty big, wow, the angle already, and what year is it? Seventy-something? What year is, what year is the truck?
Oh, uh,
Back truck? Okay.
The back truck's currently through.
So I know what to focus on, like, what is the longevity of the truck and should we pay it off? I wanna approach it from a different way. We have the purchase, we have the item, it's there. We have the expense for the purchase. Do we wanna pay it off within five years and be done with it as a budgetary item? Or do we wanna pay it off over fifteen years? Which means we have more flexibility per annual budget if we have less. But over time, we're paying more for interest and so on. Um, also, regardless of what we decide here, there's definitely times to pay it off earlier, if you so choose to. So in a sense, this gives us more flexibility, it's requested by the treasurer. But we as a board, we're gonna decide, we're gonna throw twenty-five thousand on next year and twenty-five, it should be done in four years. So it's kind of a flexibility thing. It's why I'm gonna support it, the treasurer said that's easy. But if you say, no, that's fine, we'll, you know, that's just, we don't, it has to be on.
I, I, I think something about a focus in case, right, in the bad cards, the large one, the current. That's just, to me, I'm just worried that we're gonna have, and so that's not bad about a hundred percent, that we're gonna see back truck. Hey, I think, you know, let's just, let's just.
But again, we're, we're paying in year eleven of now, but we've got ten years of good use on it, and it's no longer working, it just, you know, seems that we're still paying for it, that does take away the ten years.
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not.
I know what you're, but I know what you're saying. Any further discussion? Alright. Roll call vote please, Brian.
Mary.
Yes, I'll remember this time.
Trusty, you alright yet?
No.
Trusty Alford? No. Trusty Becker?
No.
Trusty O'Callaghan?
No.
Trusty Shetty?
No.
Trusty Law?
But, Dan, wait, I wanna take a shit. Okay, no, it failed, thank you. Alright, moving on to the next item. New business item number two, I, I wanna bypass this and see what Andy's ETA is. Uh, so Mark, if that's alright, we're gonna come back to this later. Um, send the text and find out where we're at, so we're gonna come back to that situation.
Super record.
So that's the back. Oh my gosh.
It all went out of hand.
Alright. Civilian Review and Reform Board. Uh, trustees have sent out, uh, the draft civilian review and reform board confidentiality agreement. And just as a reminder, we initially formed the CRB, civilian review board. That led to policy review and the creation of the law situated this new board appointed, uh, group, the CRRB. Really very confusing, I don't think you could have made it anywhere. It's so confusing, but anyway, um, the individuals in the CRB are not actually in the CRRB until we appoint them. We reached out to a few, that's how we handle it, but one of the things that we dictated by law of the confidentiality agreements, which of course makes sense, because they're gonna be discussing matters with the police within what they can, you know, within things that fall under the third person, and it's obviously would not be what others as the things would be. Um, trustees, do you have any thoughts, questions, things you wanna change in the confidentiality?
I, I just have one question. Sure, on number one, it says, if you ask for God's, it's a settlement, which is, or access by me to be happy. New board, it says, uh, anyone outside of the CRRB, are there situations where that information can be submitted or reported to people? Is there ever? I know that the community of the new board cannot administer discipline, but, but can they provide testimony, discipline, or ebitd, or something? Would they will need to command, because this is pretty true, it says only we on the CRRB.
I'm sorry, state your question one more time.
It says in, in number one, if you can't submit any information, anyone outside of the CRRB, are there situations where?
Oh, yes, there is, um, hold on a second. There's, there's a stipulation later on that, number three.
Right.
With the more, excuse me, four. Yes. So, uh, I would, my reading, again, I'm not a trained attorney, my reading is applicable law, inner or recovered situations would be covered up.
They, they don't report that.
They're, who's the example, they are pointing, just pointing them out today. Uh, the village board has the right to cease. Uh, I think we want to, I have, I'd have to consult, I will bring up the law, the facts from the moment. Um, but no, I have that in the previous meeting documents. Uh,
Yeah, I guess I'll. I would just hear it, I suppose.
I know it's one of the situations. We're just a local law. So this is the local law that we passed. Uh, five winning numbers, uh, each one of members may be appointed for term one year, maybe reappointed, if necessary, a term limits, scratch, the village board. Um, some people address them unless it's residence required, waived by trustees. I'm gonna scroll back for a minute to find that. For the confidentiality, we treat fair and approved by the list board to ensure appropriate confidentiality matters. shall maintain absolute confidentiality with respect confidentiality in respect to confidential privileged information received. Shall it may all respect the individual's rights and privacy, confidentiality records shall not remove any bits from record files on the village offices, shall excuse itself from participating in the inspiration of a complaint in which they are personal, professional, financial, corporate interests, and shall conduct themselves at all times in manner, uh, of maintain public confidence and fairness. Oh, Andy's back in. Hi, Andy.
Hello there.
Uh, welcome back, we have a question on the confidentiality form. Dan was, can you restate that, Dan?
Yeah, I was, I was just curious, because obviously number one provides dissemination of that, if anyone outside of the CRRB. And then three says this is for the law, I was just wondering.
So speaking to number three, he was wondering if there's any other, uh, situations where they would have to be required to disseminate information such as hearings or things like that? So that was, that was Dan's question, are there any other situations where they may need to, um, be disseminating information that wasn't covered, right?
So, not that I anticipated, Dan. Uh, this was written so that any information that the member receives as part of um, membership on the CRRB remains confidential and can't be disclosed or provided to any third party. Having said that, uh, the last clause is unless otherwise required to disclose the information pursuant to applicable law or a court order, so a subpoena is issued, a court order is issued. In those situations, there may be requirements that information be disclosed to a third party. Other than that, I, I can't see it, that this is really designed to make sure that the member is not providing that information obtained as a member of the CRRB to any third parties in any forum.
Alright, sounds good, is what he said.
Yep.
Um, trustees, any questions, comments? If there are none, um, I, we do have a resolution that would approve, uh, this agreement. We could, I gotta, I gotta read it first, but I will, uh, do my, do my fastest here. Uh, just for the record, I think I have to. Resolution improving confidentiality agreement for members of civilian review and reform board. I've spoken in great detail about the whereas statements now therefore be it resolved by the board of trustees of the village of Falls, regular session duly convened as follows, one, the village of Falls civilian review and reform board confidentiality agreement is hereby approved by the village of Falls board of trustees in the form and content attached here too. Looking to have the resolution offered? And second, alright, further discussion? Roll call vote please.
Trusty Shetty? Trusty Alford? Trusty Becker? Trusty Becker? Trusty Wally?
Yes. Alright, um, Andy, we're gonna back up to the, uh, fifty, whatever, Church Street, the number fifty-nine? Thank you.
Yep.
Um, so, um, thank you. Um, so, um, thank you, uh, trustees for, uh, jumping with us here. Um, I don't know if Andy or Mark, you want to summarize real fast on this? Andy, you want to summarize?
Um, uh, I will with the procedure. I think if Mark could start and just explain, uh, his investigation of the property, what happened earlier in the spring and what the current status of the property is. Then I'll go through these, the, the procedure.
I'm having Mark move over to the, the microphone so you can hear him. He's, he's running and, and cartwheeling, jumping jacks.
So in mid-April, I received a call from Chief Coon. Uh, he witnessed, uh, stuff flying off a roof across Church Street. As he was coming from Covell and Farnes toward the armway. So I did respond and we found some stuff on the ground. Uh, we investigated fifty-nine Church Street, the back part of the, uh, the roof had peeled up, it's a rubber roof. So, um, yeah, that's, so that's the debris that we were seeing. Um, later on, you'll see the, uh, so it's probably ten, fifteen feet of the rear portion of the building. The rubber roof is peeled up, this underneath the rubber roof is a, um, uh, fiber board type material. And that's what was flying around. So what blew up the building, what he witnessed. So we found multiple pieces of that. So, and I did find more of that up on the roof. Which I, so I did take anything that was loose that I saw, I took it and I stuffed it down the hole back inside the building. But, so now this leaves the rear portion of the building exposed to the elements. There's already a building that was gutted by a fire, uh, many years ago. It has since had construction demolition done inside of it. It has, uh, pre-recorded to rebuilding, but they stopped. Uh, they stopped many years ago. I've been here for seven and as far as I know, there's never been anybody working in the building. So once this happened, now my concern is, um, obviously, uh, accelerated, accelerated deterioration of the building because it's open to the elements. Right. So if you're not familiar, it's, uh, you have the Chinese restaurant, you have a little roadway. Yep, that's the Chinese restaurant. And this is, uh, if you back up just, can you back up one picture? I'm also a little concerned, this is along the wall, obviously, the roof has separated from what would be the flash and it comes up over. And so this wall was also open to the elements. I have a concern with that because of water getting down in there.
That's brick.
Correct. That is correct. Free straw, uh, exterior wall. I have a concern, but the immediate concern, and you know, that might be something we need to address also, the immediate concern is where the roof is built at. So we already started a court process on the owner to the point where a bench warrant had been issued for the owner for failure to appear. Because they never came to any, I went through that process that I explained to you guys before. Uh, some, uh, no, no survival. What's that? No, they were, they were, it was, uh, we went to court, they failed to show the court a couple of times. Uh, because they're, then they're given a couple of options there too to show the court. And once they, the judge determined they're enough enough, he issued the bench.
Will we serve that if they're not in the village?
No.
That's, is that one of your questions?
Oh, okay, sorry. All right. So the bench, the bench warrant hasn't issued yet, they have.
Is it a question?
In a force.
So you can say it in California.
I, I sent him a letter to tell him the bench warrant had been issued.
Unfortunately, there's, there's two people that have an interest in this building and one almost had a deal. Come to find out, it wasn't in the first contact's name, it was in wife's name, who resides it for.
Wow. So yeah, there's multiple stories out there. Originally it was in his name, the guy who keeps, who keeps getting in contact with. It was in his name originally when I started. It had since changed to what I thought was his wife. I've been told it's his daughter. She's in Italy, she's in Florida. I don't know where she's, but she's not here.
So basically some.
Right. Now, so. Correct. And one thing that you guys, with all this stuff that we talked about, anytime we talk about these buildings, what you have to remember is we have to pay the bill. So if we hire somebody, you guys have, you authorize this. For me to hire somebody to fix that roof, we have to pay the, the cost of that. We get reimbursed from the county, but the initial upfront cost we do have to pay.
I, I think you have to.
Well, I, I, and I'm concerned about the building and this, I agree. You know, we have enough buildings that are already falling apart. This is one we can still save. You know, so.
All right, Andy, you want to take it from here?
Sure. So under the village's, um, local law dealing with unsafe buildings and structures, this is something the village board has dealt with previously. But you dealt with in the context of demolishing buildings that are structurally unsound. Your local law also deals with, uh, unsafe buildings or structures that can be repaired and your local law does allow you to order the property owner to complete the necessary repairs and secure the building or the structure. That's what's being proposed here. So in front of you, well, first of all, the building department, Mark, did, uh, prepare a report outlining the safety concern, uh, declaring that in his opinion, the building is unsafe as defined under your local law. Your local law does have particular provisions regarding damage to buildings due to wind, which is what occurred here. So in the record on this matter is a letter report from the building department indicating it is an unsafe structure in his opinion under the, uh, requirements of the village's local law. Uh, that he had tried to previously direct the owner to make the necessary repairs. The owner failed to do that. It remains in an unsafe condition. This resolution in front of you is the first step in your local law process. It does indicate that the code enforcement officer has provided the report to you declaring the building unsafe and in need of repair. Uh, and that based upon that report, the building located at fifty-nine Church Street, which you just uh, is unsafe and in need of immediate repair. The resolution goes on to say that the, the board then orders that the owner re, make the necessary repairs to the roof in order to secure the building. There is a form of a written notice and order that is then served on the owner of the property. That the repairs have to commence within fifteen days after that notice is served on the property owner. Your local law doesn't afford the property owner due process through holding a public hearing. That owner can come in front of the board and in essence dispute the fact that it's unsafe, can discuss with you manner in which the building can be made safe or repaired. And that's a due process element. And so the resolution does schedule a public hearing. Now, Rob, I, I see on here, I've used your village hall office. If you want to have it at the highway department, that could be changed this evening. Otherwise, it would be in the village hall where the village court operates.
We're good with the, the village court.
Yeah, I, I thought so because that's where Mark and I have been doing the code enforcement cases is right in. And that the last part is an important piece, which is if the owner fails to make the necessary repairs and make the building safe as, has been ordered by the board of trustees, then the village may move forward and cause those repairs to be completed. And the costs and expenses incurred are assessed against the land. So how that works is, as Mark just said to you, the village does need to come with, come up with a cost upfront um, to pay for the necessary repairs. You then get billed by your contractor. That bill is then created, sent to the property owner. If the property owner fails to make payment, it will be re-lebbed on next year's real property tax bill. And that's how you get made whole by the county. Understand, you've just went through a billing cycle. And that if this does occur, it will be another full year until it gets re-lebbed onto the next year's real property tax bill. That's simply the, 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 the taxing schedule. So in front of you is this proposed resolution, uh, the form of the notice to serve on the property owner. And also the notice of public hearing. So if the board is.
Is there no other recourse of what Kevin's asking?
Um. If, if the re, there, there would always be a recourse to say that the building is failing to comply with the property maintenance code and have that case penned in village court. Uh, Mark has explained to you the issue with, with getting the owner to appear in village court. There, there could be an ability to go in state supreme court and seek an injunction mandating the property owner to do this, but your local law provides an alternate way to do that, which is to order that the, the owner do this.
I, I told this, Mark, this earlier, that, that house is on the New York or the county's tax list.
Do you hear that, Andy?
I don't. Can you repeat that, Rob?
Uh, Kevin said that this house is on the New York tax lists, or county tax lists, unpaid for many years. Seven thousand note.
Bobby, I'm sorry, you have a question, Andy?
So, uh, should we do the review back to the?
I have not thought of that much, though. Because it doesn't change, it doesn't change anything. My, my, we are officially going. They just won't stop. I, I wish you did so often.
Send a message to people, because we've got these people buying up these properties. We've got the sidewalk, the material, the phone. Put it in the nursing home, I don't know. Prove them, let it stay on, whatever. Uh, and we have all these deadlines, the volume of properties, the sort of phone that is prepared. And I guess the question for me is, do we want to work on, do we sound, or do we want to work like?
I would love to see us have some kind of a, a local law for, and use the property on the corner of Kerry and Church as an example where it sold a couple of times at auction and the, the people they buy up slightly, actually one center street the same way. Um, and they come up and find out that it's, it's obviously nothing I wanted. And they walk away and now it goes back to the whole process and sits there for two more years.
Yeah.
People who buy these properties need to be acknowledged.
I'm a game for whatever.
Can we make a local law of it? It goes about the county law, so we.
That's, that's what I forget. The one center street act, that is making the work. They got a lot of the decked off, went in, stripped everything of value.
Out of it and walk away, declared bankruptcy when the county did go after them, which delayed it even longer.
Yeah, so he made a lot of money, had his stuff, and I saw him with, yeah, he's a lot of them. So I don't think that personally no longer been a county's option.
Yeah, so that's, that's the one thing.
So Andy, Andy, just to summarize, uh, what you all about then?
I was wondering if there's some local law path we could do that would what supersede the, the county? In a sense, on, on situations like this? So we, so, so we could get things addressed around the tax roller or non-tax on the auction sooner than five years, something like that. Mark had a, another thought about seeing a local law that.
Well, that's just part of that discussion. We're ready.
Yeah.
We could get, we could set up an eight or a couple of years.
Yeah. So, so Andy, conclusion overall, we're, we're good with this. Do we, uh?
Resolution or set the public hearing first? What's your order?
Uh, you should, in the resolution, uh, set the public hearing. Obviously, it's going to be a special meeting of the board. Uh, it will be at village hall, but you've got to set the date and the time.
Um. Andy, how much time do we have to give for public hearing? Is it just fifty minutes minimum?
No.
Oh, how soon can we do the, um, the, the, the special meeting and how long does it have to be?
Well, the, the local law doesn't answer that. It doesn't give a particular notice period. Um, generally, given this, that the order's got to be served and I, I would think a minimum of twenty days. Uh, that would set the public hearing. The public hearing itself will, will go for as long as it's going to go. Um.
So July fifth is the first Tuesday, that's twenty days from tonight.
Okay.
Twenty-one, actually. Um, it's a week before the regular July twelfth meeting. What do you guys want to do? Set it for what, to July fifth, village office? Okay.
Robbie, how to repeat that for me?
Andy, because it's a public hearing, does it have to be noticed in the paper?
Yes, and I, I've got the public hearing notice drafted. That's part of your document. Will get published as a normal public hearing. So when the official newspaper signboard.
So this will be a special meeting on July fifth? Um, six P M? All we need is a quorum, correct?
Correct.
All right. So part of the resolution, July fifth, um, six P M. We will do that village hall for the special meeting. Um, Andy, how much of this do I have to read?
Well, I basically just stepped through what the resolution says.
You did, thank you.
Yes.
So now therefore be resolved, all that, like we've been talking about and seen on the screen. Um, forgone resolution, we need it to be offered? Kevin, second, Bobby, further discussion? On, I'm sorry, roll call vote, please.
Thank you, Andy, and thank you, Mark.
Who's bonus talking right now? Those deputy clerks fucking know.
A lot of times you can switch to, you have to have a proposal and a plan before you can bid on a property. Can we do that?
Andy, the question is, uh, is there anything we can do to strengthen the local law? Um, or as an example that Kevin brought up, require what plans before they bid on a property? Although it'd have to be a county, but we could always advocate for the county, to the county as well. Andy, what are, yeah, I, I know that. Wha, what are our options to strengthen local law? Dan is like gung ho on this. We're all gung ho on this, I think.
Certainly, I can further review that, but my answer is very little. Uh, that, that's in, that's really governed under the, uh, real property tax law. Uh, on, because all of this arises when you have the tax foreclosures. All this is set forth in state statute on procedure on the annual real property tax bills go out. If they're not paid, they're re-lebbed. A county makes the municipality whole and then it's added to the county list and state law then allows the county to move forward and foreclose and hold a tax sale, not the municipalities. Because the municipalities are made whole financially by the county through the state procedure. So it really is a county-centered tax foreclosure procedure, uh, for the village.
Okay. Thank you, Andy. I think, uh, I think we're going to still want to beat this drum and see if anything can happen, but. Yeah. Yes. Which we could be heading to as well with another location.
You need your money to be able to move forward and you can just go ahead and do all this stuff and not have the money to make repairs and move forward now.
Moving on, we were in the middle of the C R R B discussions. Uh, we had some residents interested in being appointed to the C R R B. There were four individuals on the original C R B. Uh, that was Doug Sauer, Jason Von Guinness, David Borg, Trish Blumer. Uh, we reached out to, I think, all of them today. I know Bobby Decker, you'd spoken to some. We got confirmation from both Trish Blumer. And Jason, right, that they wanted to be. Do you, what, do you got that from today? Yes, okay. So we have the confidentiality agreement, uh, and ready to go and approved. Um, we have a maximum of five appointments to make. We can obviously do. Three tonight. We have not heard from Dave Ford if he wants to be on. Um, but we could always have a special meeting to make further appointments up to the five. Or we can wait and appoint the other two later. Yeah, so, um. Knowing that we have three appointments, um, Andy, should I have a motion for all three or individually?
I do it individually.
Okay, um, entertaining, uh, looking for a motion to appoint Trish Blumer to the C R R B. Thank you, Bobby and pretty much everybody else. Further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Poser abstentions? Carrie's Trish is appointed, looking for a motion to, um, appoint, uh, Doug Sauer to the C R R B. Thank you, thank you, Bobby Decker and Dan. Further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Poser abstentions? Carrie's and, uh, looking for a motion to appoint, uh, Jason Butt again to the C R R B. Any further discussion? All in favor? Poser of sentence? Alright, Carrie's, we have our three points in. Two more to go. Good stuff, yeah. Andy, the question is, we haven't heard from Dave Ford, but he was on the C R B originally. Couldn't hurt to appoint him. In case he is interested. And then if he's not, we just. Um, I guess unappoint him. How would we do that?
No, I, 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 I would counsel to, to hold. The fact that he was a member of the C R B is different. Than the C R R is constituted. You should get, uh, at least, uh, notice of interest.
Okay, alright, thank you. Okay, alright. Alright, new business, uh, number three ARPA funds. Um, we had a couple of things that we talked about and I threw up here. Both discussion, review of the gazebo, uh, railing project, review of details regarding the potential. Hiring of an expert to review parking in the village and any additional ARPA projects. You guys can kind of take this, oh, did he just leave? Unacceptable, I'm just kidding. Um, anybody want to share anything while we wait for, uh, Bobby Decker? Oh, good, alright. Yes. Can you summarize what we have in the way of quotes right now? Okay. Is that one of the two hard quotes we have or is this a separate one? The first person you mentioned who could do it in July, does that quote price still? Is that price still good from last year's? So he didn't say that that, that price still goes. It would be a different price, okay. So Andy, to summarize, I think we have this right. Bobby Decker has two hard quotes. He has discussions with, um, two other contractors that are going. Um, a third contractor gave us a price last year, um, but would likely give us a new price. It's not a price that would stick for this year. Marie's got it right here. Copy of the procurement policy. We got it right here. Coming over.
I can.
You can, could you hear me when I said that?
Not well, so why don't you repeat that, Bobby?
The first guy I'm talking about had given me a number last year, but he threw a fit about. The village has to buy the material. And so one of his comments was. Well, I'll think about it if you guys don't play the bullshit game for yourself. Uh, would that count as being not deemed responsible? Andy didn't come get it done in the time and said if he still wanted to wait, so he didn't give me a new number. But would his attitude count for being deemed not responsible?
So I, I'll give you the quick primer on that. Responsibility is determined by the, the approving board. Okay, and you can take into account factors like, uh, reliability, timeliness, quality of work. Um, many times on bid documents, you ask for. Other projects they've worked on and references. All of this goes into a determination of whether the particular contractor is responsible. So the, the attitude of maybe I will, maybe I won't. Could that factor into a determination of whether this contractor is responsible or not? The answer is, yeah, you have that discretion.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the, the other guy just, he also threw a bit and he didn't have insurance last year, so we couldn't give him. The bid to do the floor of the bandstand and now he's mad because he didn't get it and he fought the work by the guy. Who did it was terrible and he's throwing a fit. And not showing up. So I mean, I'm, I'm kinda at the point where. I can't just go crazy trying to get this guy to show up. And the other guy basically insulting me or the village. About having to get the material, which to me means he wants to work for the period. That's a reliability thing to me as well. So we agree? And I do have copies of these screenshots and everything, Andy. But as a matter of fact, I just got a hard copy of the. We have two in possession, actual, and I just, you could probably put the one. And then I just emailed you another.
Yeah, everyone has this copy here. Andy, can you see that on the screen?
I can.
Okay, so we have this copy. Um, let's see if I can bring out the email one. And here is number two.
You'll see, that's gonna be harder to read. They both have given options. The first one, Goldstein's instruction has given us three different options with prices for each and then. Golden construction did two. So I think now we've got to look at what we want. Goldstein, you want me to talk about the specific ways? So first. Option we have with Goldstein is, you know, we get pressure treated square balancers, unpainted. Materials and label labor will be sixty-one ten. And he knows that we buy the material. Um, number two would be pressure treated colonial balancers. Which are the pretty ones, right? That's gonna be seventy-one ten. And keep in mind, we are gonna make this to code. Um, and then the third one. Is eighty-five ten, all pressure treated. For the vinyls, yeah. Well, they're all pressure treated except for the vinyl.
Those, yeah, those are all.
A week ago, but it's all pressure treated of the two lumber options, so they're probably stronger. Yeah, a lot of times the vinyl, okay, we reinforce like a few, not two by two. That may look good and be sturdy.
I, I, I was actually wondering that we're, we're talking about like vinyls in like a plastic shell.
Oh, it says it right here. It's all like vinyl rounds with the square balancers, just like these. So this is a combination.
No, I was just wondering if, because you can get, I mean, most people, if you really want to build a long seventy. Which is, it's, it's just like lumber, by one by eight, you know, whatever. And that stuff lasts, whatever. And that rocks. If you look at the porch on the side of my house. That's all, everything you see is through the P D C. You cannot tell. Except for the corbels that I made in the cup, even the bead board that's put on piece by piece and even, it's not even a big sheet. That's all through P D C. A long time, it's like.
Andy, I don't know if you heard that the band wall tends to be all the work by itself.
Well, we're also gonna do here in his, and then. Side facing the parking lot, which is where the, the rock band, all the bands we have play doors. That will also be the loading sign down for even the community. And those railings will be removal. So they'll be open. When they're out, they'll be locked and placed. So if we add this, something kind of.
It wasn't, it wasn't my idea. It was somebody, uh, Steve Bradley. When people are down the long street and here, you can't see the band playing. They're sitting, we can stand the charts.
It'll be like the stage where you'll be, when you're watching. Bus side drive, you're seeing the band like they're on stage. Also, Goldstein offered to build a drum stand for us at no cost. That would be all be stored underneath the bandstand. Let's lift the drummer out there. As he said, we can get out of the stone. He did, David's idea. He said, uh, talking to a band that pleased. But anyways, that would be donated. That's nothing to do with.
Okay, uh, so that's the first one. And the second one, you want to talk to the rest?
That's all explained very easily.
Pressure treated, two by two square spindles. Falling south top and bottom rails.
It's basically the same.
And then, right, all white vinyl.
Which is a little more expensive for the vinyl. Right, it's more expensive on the pressure treated and the vinyl. And we don't get the drum stand, so. Yeah, I mean, Goldstein says he can get, yeah, I'm sorry. Golden construction wouldn't even be able to get to it till late fall. Goldstein said, you know, he can have it done by July, so if we get back to him tomorrow, soon. Nah, I'm ready to. I'm ready to go with Goldstein and then I would like to see what other of the three options.
Andy, with, with, with two, with two hard options, with two harder passes, is that enough due diligence?
No easy answer to this, Rob. Um, the way Bobby's described it. He has, in my opinion, undertaken good faith efforts to get three quotes. You don't have three quotes. Could you, you know, advertise in some kind of newspaper or something? I suppose you could. But as Bobby just reviewed, there is a timeliness issue associated with this as well, wanting to get it done for this summer season. So, uh, is there a basis to conclude that there's been good faith efforts to comply with the procurement policy? And get three quotes, given the prices? I, I think an argument could be made to say yes.
Alright, so trust me. What do we think? Are we thinking the white vinyl, square balance? Ready five ten plus the addition of that one you want to go with?
I think go with the vinyl, do you think?
I like the vinyl, we just wear it.
That would think Kevin do, I mean, that makes sense to me. You know, it's water resistant.
Yeah, I think the way to go to a cellular P D C, which are vinyl, are pretty spread. It's like the dancing classic in styrofoam buildings, turned into a solid substance. And they literally can mill it, like spindles, it's like, it's cut. I can, I, I can vote tomorrow. Alright, I was just looking for seven, seven babies on vinyl logs.
So is it, is it solid or?
It's the type of fence you have to buy on the side.
Yeah, is it, is it hollow inside or is it solid?
It'll be hollow inside, but it'll be filled with the, uh, square pegs, just like my vinyl looks.
I have, I have a vinyl front porch and it's wooden, it's wood inside the center. It's not hollow, it's hollow, but there's wood in the, in, inside.
It saves money for not having to repay it.
So Bobby, basically, you all are kind of assuming, yes, the vinyl, but then he's thinking about another option.
I just, I can get it. If you want me to reach out to the guy, I can talk to him tomorrow or something. And we can, I don't mind going to do it.
It would change the price.
Well, I think it's gonna be a lot.
I think we go with, uh, third option.
I'm good with that. You want to make a motion to, um, and, and, and. Andy, if I can, I want all this motion to be specific to making this quote and using ARPA funds for purchase, correct?
That's correct. And, and we'll note for the record that. The, based on this discussion, the village board has made good faith efforts to comply with the village procurement policy. And what I also heard was there is a potential safety issue with the current status of the gazebo. And in that regard, there's a potential emergency situation. So that section of the procurement policy. Uh, could be relied upon as well, moving forward with getting a timely repair to the gazebo.
All, all that, all I mentioned, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, make the motion to. Uh, Greg Goldstein instructions for option number three.
All with our.
Of ARPA funds.
All right. Make for our funds, do I have a second?
Well, if I could, I, I'd add to that motion in an amount not to exceed eight thousand five hundred ten dollars.
Right. Okay, thank you, Andy. So both, you still have a second, yes? Both, if I can, good. Further discussion? All favor? I oppose your sentence. Caris, thank you guys, thank you all around.
Thank you.
All right, um, to start, Andy, Martin asked first, Kevin?
I had two bids on a parking lot, which originated from another city, it could give a Z-march, but, uh, both were, we've been a thousand dollars to each other, firm and all, the game, the firm, and then which, uh, it's got a lot of work to do. So, uh, I think the price is nine thousand five hundred, the firm and all, it's ten something.
Do you have those quotes emailed?
I, I passed them off to a guy.
And Bobby, you have the two quotes for the parking stuff that you're emailing for, coming up on the board right now? Andy, one more thing for that is, uh, what do you say the preference, Kevin? Under ten?
Under ten, ten something, ten and change.
One is only ten, one's over ten. Uh, we have two quotes. Is this a specialized service?
No, so, so, if I could put on, Kevin did mention earlier in an email, and he's correct on this, that this type of expert services is specialized in an expert service, and there is an exemption for that, uh, from public or competitive bidding requirements.
All right, so if you guys can, what do you call me the, uh, quotes, we can discuss and move on right now if you want.
I can't find it.
Kevin, you would just have to give me a deal.
A long representative. Yeah. A long representative.
A long representative.
Well, we can come back to this, you guys keep looking, I'm looking at email, but I'm not seeing uh, quotes. I haven't seen last discussion of parking. In church. Yeah, I'm not seeing, so if you guys find it in your email, please, um, um, you said there was one from Bennington, one from Albany, um, the prices were close, remember who was the owner of that?
Yeah, we brought the ball in, I just don't, so, MSK Engineering.
Got it.
Yeah, I believe it.
All right.
Actually, first, the gospel bowl will totally not exceed ten thousand dollars.
Okay, up on the board, is the quote from Williamstown Art House?
No, that was for the.
That's for, that's for the.
Wrong, uh, here, sorry. All right. Take two, you can find it out, I don't have it, I don't know. Put up there, where is? All right, then, very much, I'm sure this makes a great call to the meeting hall. Uh, MSK engineers. Can you guys read that? Is this the one out of Albany?
No, that's.
That's the one.
Uh, I mean, one of the quick things, the engineer I talked to, the person that's, the type of project, he's a boy three, he's he's very familiar with his quality. Situation. Said he loved the weather and that, of course, they're trying to sell themselves, but still, they, uh, they know our.
Still, Lord. They've divided, impact man, they were part of the day, cost closed at ten thousand, not.
Not to exceed.
All right, there's a red schedule, the world for. Right, I mean, broke down. Gotcha. And, and you can see those in the home, right?
Correct.
Uh, do you have one comment?
That one was quite a while ago.
All right, I'm looking.
That was pretty many engineering.
Got it. Does that see how we have to see one?
Yeah.
I have one. Manny can hear me?
Pretty many. The, the price was a lump sum of eleven thousand.
Can you forward that for me right now? Um, and that's the one from Albany. Well, I would rather run with that anyway, knowing, knowing that they're more local, and also seeing some of the things mentioned that were made done before. Um, I have the pieces of things they've done in Bennington, and I have pieces of it done at Silver Creek tomorrow, which they, that here.
You said the guy was a white group?
Right.
Jeff.
Yeah, I, I think that's kind of no right.
All right.
That's a little, that beats a heck of a Albany to me.
Yep.
No doubt, something would probably went through the.
All right, I'm here on the bridge, five to line of casting, please. Yeah, my computer is very much on the grid right now, so Andy, are you still there?
I'm still here.
Fantastic, I have no idea how, I've lost the top portion of my screen, which is very strange. Um, I'm trying to bring up a quote that Kevin just got me. I cannot find it, here it is. Is this the one? This is the second, yeah, this is the only one. Um, which way is on? So Andy, we have two quotes. Uh, we all, I think we all want to go with the one from Bennington.
Yep.
Um, specialized service, are we good to pull trigger if that's for Jesus? Andy, still there?
Oh, okay, I couldn't hear you well, if that was a question for me. My only question is, uh, the Creighton Manning proposals, uh, close to a year old, what was the date of the Bennington firm? And are the prices still good?
Uh, we're, we don't know? Have any ideas though?
Usually, they say, we, we.
Is that on top of them?
The motion, yeah, we could, we could go back, we could, Andy, we could do a motion for the Bennington firm not to exceed ten thousand, so if the price is higher than the quote from a few months ago, we just have to come back, correct?
Uh, that's correct.
Okay. Uh, I am sorry that my computer is being very long right now, I don't know why. So I'm gonna, yeah, do this as best I can. Um, trustees, do you guys want to move on the settings and, uh, through the Bennington part of the study?
Yeah.
Yeah. Kevin, do you want to make that motion? All right?
I'll second it.
All right, so again, this is, um, which firm we have?
Yeah.
MSK, this will be, uh, to approve parking, um, study, uh, the firm MSK out of Bennington, uh, using ARPA funds up to ten thousand dollars. We all good on that? Andy, we have a second? Further discussion, Andy, then. All in favor?
Uh, before, before there's a vote, if, if we can also, just because these, as I understand, it would be ARPA funds being used, we'll make the record clear that, uh, this project is for an allowable use of ARPA funds for municipal parking purposes. Uh, they're professional services to analyze parking in the downtown, uh, kind of village area, and they qualify as an allowable use under ARPA, in that the proposal would be paid through ARPA funds.
Thank you, Andy. All right, so all in favor?
All right.
Aye. Close your sessions? Caris, anything else you want to discuss, Parker?
Yeah, yeah. Well, just one more, with the new surprising request. Um, I don't know if people saw it, from the Country Observer, this recently, there was a great article about these falls and how local restaurants are turning things around, and how these good things are happening. And, and their question for these rising, some great things that they're asking for, that town already approved a request for pretty much the same thing to happen in town with, uh, all kinds of historical signage, and I don't know any more of what they were, was in the. That's what they're working with in the historical society, uh, to do some, yeah, this is historical signage. I don't know what's up anymore. And, uh, and the proposal for the village, one of them is signage for the Grand Morse's, uh, location where pages were discovered. I think they'll go, actually get shot, and I think there would be a picture of something of, of Grand Morse's to highlight, you know, the impact that the, what happened in these falls, and, like, so, I think the funds for this, I've heard of a while. Also, one of the projects putting some, uh, down in the river, right, where the Walter Woodhouse and Waters, stores go there as well. Kind of storing the wood company, although it's long gone, and it was one of the Walter Woodhouse benches next to it, that's where we you know, highlight the history of the company.
I'll make the motion to approve ten thousand dollars spent, given the Uber price and, uh, your companies.
Is that what they asked?
They asked for ten thousand dollars.
After they had, Bobby had it.
Okay. Do you have a second for that motion? So we have a motion to, um, uh, Andy, you won't be the one for this, uh, it's ten thousand dollars as requested by the surprising from ARPA.
Hmm.
This would be for tourism-related.
Well, I suppose, yeah, I, I suppose it's categorized as a not-for-profit. Uh, and I get that, not-for-profit entity within the village for purposes of, you know, business development and other allowable uses under ARPA. My only, my only question before you move forward is, I know there was a specific, and Bobby Decker will have these numbers, uh, speci- a specific amount of money in the first tranche of the ARPA funds. A portion of that was used for water budget in your annual.
Yeah, Denise says we have about twenty thousand approximately left in our first round. I just checked our available available money.
Okay. And you've spent about fifteen thousand tonight already?
No, we spent eighty-five, oh, yeah, we spent eighty-five.
We spent, uh, ten plus eighty-one.
So you spent eighteen thousand dollars.
We have to wait.
Well, we can approve it, we just have this first check.
We have to wait, well, no, before I answer that.
No, I, I, I quite frankly, I'd counsel the board to be very cautious and conservative, this is a federal project, ARPA. It's got to be documented properly, and I know there's a, a second round of money coming this, uh, summer, or I anticipate that. But I certainly wouldn't approve the use of funds until that is actually made to the village.
So we'll return that money out of our economic development line. And if it's eligible, pay it back.
Did you hear that, Andy?
I did not.
What if we took the money, uh, for this out of economic development and later, if possible, use the ARPA fund to reimburse economic development, does that work or not?
Uh, my answer, as I sit here right now, is I don't know, because I haven't looked at that issue under ARPA, whether you can basically reimburse yourself. Obviously, we know you can't use ARPA mon- monies for debt service, but I don't know the answer to whether you can basically pay yourself back using general fund monies or economic development monies.
Also, I feel like we already did a healthy chunk of ARPA funds, when we approved the budget to make the water budget work.
Sewer base money.
What's that?
It's a sewer back truck.
Yeah, so between that money and two things we approved tonight, that maybe wanting to hold off and, and try to get people ready for the discussion meeting in a couple of weeks, or in the July meeting. I mean, I think we're all on favor.
I think I arranged, I mean, it's coming along. Yeah, I believe.
And then we can have an idea of what we have left, we can relook the remaining projects. I think, um, I think, I think it's obvious, Kevin, that we're all on favor, if we can provide some money, we just have to get it as far away to get the money coming. That, that seem like what you go thinking?
Yeah, I think, yeah, it's right around the border.
Yeah, if you're talking about ordering materials to supply chain issues, you're talking about installation of everything that's.
Yeah, I don't feel whatever.
Yeah, it seems like it's something we should jump on as fast as we can, because it's, uh, it's the fire.
Exactly.
The, the ARPA is just out there, we should be, not wait for anything.
Well, we can always try to go especially next.
Well, we can, we take it out of, you know, development costs, that's what we're for.
Because I honestly, I don't know how much we have in economic development.
Twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four thousand?
What if we normally use economic funds for?
Last time we used it, we used it for the rural, uh, walking, it's the, the owl?
Oh, right, the owl.
Well, that's separate from.
Yeah, but I don't think you can replenish, that would be.
I mean, you can, of course, we can use for something else. Economic development, the, the.
Problems, we've used a lot of our ARPA money already, so should we wait?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, we, I mean, we, the town, we did, uh, five thousand.
Well, who'd do the other thing, let's, the, the, the parkings, I mean, we're not going to pay the ten thousand dollars upfront. Right, Kevin?
Right.
So, I mean, that's, right, I mean, we're, the first thing we're going to pay.
We got the other one.
The first thing we're going to pay our money is going to be the Z-march. So there's eighty-five hundred, but then if we have approximately twenty left, I mean, the, we know.
That's what the computer purchases to be.
That was already great.
The lease says twenty years of no.
Is that prior to the eighteen we spent tonight?
Right, that's the beginning of the, like, twenty now.
Right, but I'm saying, the, the, take, forget, the ten that for the parkings, parking study is not going to be spent, I mean, we're approving it, but we're not going to hand over the money right away, and it's going to take some time to do the study as well.
Yep.
You don't get no money.
Right, so I, I, I mean, I think we should try to go forward with the riding request, you know, even though we don't have the money, you know, it's not, it's in our, it's in our checkbook, we have written the check.
And I think, I think the board wants to move forward with approving the huge rising request of, uh, ten thousand dollars under, um, economic development and tourism for ARPA funding.
Well, as I said earlier, I, I, I can't. Well, as I said earlier, I I I can't answer the question of whether you're gonna be able to use ARPA money to to reimburse that economo- economic development fund. And I can't counsel you to move forward in that regard, if you choose to do that, then that's a board decision. But I'm not gonna counsel you by saying this is consistent with the ARPA guidelines. I have a real concern about federal oversight in this project, we've been very careful to identify what those funds can be used for and cannot, and creating a record on how those funds were used in case the village is audited. Having said that, I can't counsel you one way or the other on this one, if you wanna move forward, that'll be a board decision.
Can we hold off on the parking until we get to that round?
We we hold off on?
The ten thousand money spent on the parking, so he goes July, we get the money.
Well, there's, there's two things to be discussed, the one is we have the money right now, knowing that the second round is coming in. What Andy's saying is, if we pull the trigger on this and we have done some sort of stuff incorrectly and it comes under federal review, it may be not considered under uh, a pause, and then we have to basically take it off.
Yeah, but there's a completely different, when Andy said, Bobby said, take, take the ARPA, ARPA money instead for that, rather than the uh, the parking study, because the parking study part will be done until three months from now, three months from now.
So we put that on the list, though, we'll, we'll, can you take back that motion?
No, we've approved it, we just don't have to, in a sense.
Guys, my counsel would be, if we're gonna move in that direction, then make a motion to rescind the award of that contract to the Bennington firm for the parking study. And then free up that ten thousand dollars and move forward in this, and then hold on awarding any contract for a parking study until the ARPA fund's second round is in.
I'll give you a chance to call back the firm and see if they're trying to avoid it, I believe.
Okay, okay, thank you, Andy, um, looking for motion to rescind parking award?
I'll make the motion, second.
All right, Bobby and Bobby, further discussion? All in favor of rescinding the award?
Aye.
I close your sentence. Carries, knowing that, I'm looking for motion to approve um, awarding Uzic rising of ten thousand dollars out of the ARPA funds under um, tourism and economic development efforts as it relates to uh, ARPA federal requirements, Andy, you have to add to that?
I do not.
All right, Bobby, that's a good motion, Dan said, further discussion? All right, carrying none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, both of sentences. Carries, thank you guys for pushing through on that, I know she wanted to get that done, so we got that done. Um, moving, uh, are we doing our real fun discussions for the night? We are, right? Bobby, Kevin, ready, we're good with our discussion for tonight?
Yeah.
Great, thank you. We've discussed um, noise protection, contingency laws, or anything else you want to discuss about that? Okay, carrying none, we'll simply move on. Motion, uh, we have the holiday twenty twenty-two poll declarations, uh, information. Technically, this is all money that is budgeted for, are you doing sunrise real fast?
Yeah, basically, um, last year we did the holiday, we reached the polls, we did seven, we got a John Street, the last one. We did budget in, I guess, and this year we do seven polls. In contact with the company, these rates are good till the end of June. Our orders, um, twelve to eighteen week, or twelve fifteen weeks to get in, so we are going, uh, but we do have a money budget, they want about forty dollars in last year, so we're now at five thirty, thirty. We have seven polls, that we're gonna upstart off of that three hundred.
These are big, I think, the ones just like we had on John Street?
Correct, that's exactly, we're gonna carry that thing.
Right on.
They will have like that, that will, those will need a lot quicker, and we'll, like, discuss that.
So with that in mind, once you guys have any questions, we're looking for a motion to approve the purchase for twenty twenty-two holiday corrections for the total amount of you know, how much is total?
Last year's, cause we're on Thursday, everyone's on a bill.
Okay.
We have.
Andy, we're, we have a kind of budget, what do we need to do to just kind of give the official, okay, I guess?
Well, the amount's been budgeted, correct, you're just taking it out of annual budgeted funds for this?
Yes.
Yeah.
So we need to motion to approve the purchase new core, right?
Correct.
Looking for motion. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, yeah, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close your sentences. Carries, second, we're all in favor, that's been great, thank you so much. Uh, we have three part-time summer applications to receive uh, from uh, our advertisement, we're gonna pass us around, two of them. Oh, you guys seen them, seen them, our previous workers that we love, third one, Neil has interviewed, and you're good with? All right, so um, if we're looking to move forward with those, maybe one person at a time, I think?
One person at a time and indicate the term for the uh, part-time employment.
Uh, what is the term? Just a summer play? Temporary. Temporary summer season employment, does that work, Andy?
Uh, that'll work.
Okay, so I'm looking uh, for motion to approve hiring Neil as summer uh, DPW work for the summer season.
Motion.
Thank you, Bobby and Megan, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close your sentences. Carries, thank you, looking for motion to hire Neil Kunitz for summer work, same, same thing, seasonal off. Thank you, Dan.
Sure.
Thank you, Bobby, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close your sentences. Finally, uh, the new uh, first move deal interview, uh, this will be Brad Sinek, we're looking for motion to approve Brad Sinek. Same thing, summer from DPW, the way the season comes.
Motion.
Sorry, good. Thank you, Bobby and Bobby, further discussion? All in favor? Aye, close your sentences. Great, awesome. Uh, Neil, we have talked about the view of quotes for wood grinding and chipping of the pile, phrase, they pile is not quite enlarged enough, word, it should be more like, um, ice burn, but not from the mountain, how many quotes do we have right now, Neil? Just the one? Um.
I can make a couple, a couple of them. Get some verbiage or email, let's hopefully.
Will you need us to move on as soon as you have the votes, Dan?
I will.
Okay, pile, we're gonna write those up. Yeah, we can't move on it now, but uh, it would be very, be very simple, probably, especially meeting for, just to move on this, if that's good, is that good with you guys? Neil, where does this come from budget-wise? Radio number?
Neil was gallivanting.
Recycling contingency law?
No.
We haven't done this for many years, right?
Gallivant.
Do we get any of the wood chips?
No. We just kind of come up with it.
All right, there's all different types of things, you don't want them losing, they can throw back. That's, yeah, that would be bad, my wife is trained to be on that, that would be bad. All right, so nothing to act on right now, but we will possibly do things sooner. Okay, um, I have some letters of resignation, I'm looking for motion to accept letter of resignation for parking officer Justin Ash.
Second.
Thank you, and thank you, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close your sentences. Carries, looking for uh, motion to accept letter of resignation for uh, parking officer Tom Mass.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, close your sentences. Carries, looking for motion to accept letter of resignation for parking officer Peter Valeri. Is that you? I need Deb or someone. Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, close your sentence. Carries, finally, um, and those are all dated, I succeed most recently to take, looking for motion uh, to accept letter of resignation of parking officer Cora Lang.
Motion, starting to see you go, you'll still have.
Thank you, Kevin. And leave a second?
Second.
All right. Uh, I agree with Kevin. Further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
I, regretfully.
Regretful, close your sentences. All right, carries, thank you. Uh, so we've resolution regarding UZIC. And we ran into this, I gotta find it here. Uh, because it was just a cutting edge on a hallway, um, we needed to officially do it, municipality, name it, depending what we do, so that we could do, we need to close the office, uh, further, with a quick discussion with um,
UZIC is on a Saturday, Sunday.
It is, but it's being observed on Monday, that part is, um, with the conversation with our labor council, if we were to give off the day off to any of our unions, that's something that would have to be negotiated. So what this president does, uh, decide laying out uh, the UZIC holiday, is is uh, the mayor, the authority of the board to say, to negotiate that as her course decisions. Um, Andy, you want to review anything else on this?
Uh, just a quick note, th- this is declaring the holiday for twenty twenty-two subject to the mayor and labor council discussions with uh, the employee labor unions. And then certainly you can act on this in subsequent years.
Yeah, so this is just for uh, twenty twenty-two. So hearing all that, we're gonna resolve by order of trustee, the following regulations, actually, follow one, those who fall outside of our plan, two, that you think, uh, UZIC National Freedom Day. While the municipal offices will be closed on Monday, June twenty, twenty, uh, twenty twenty-two. Observance of this holiday, the call is preferred, that the mayor is hereby authorized to coordinate with the council on the implementation of this municipal holiday to all the municipal employee labor unions. Uh, need uh, some of this resolution? And Bobby, second? Great, all right, thank you, further discussion? Okay, uh, vote, vote.
Transition?
Yeah.
Transitionary? Transitionary?
Yep.
Transitionary?
Yes.
Transitionary?
Yes.
And.
Yes. All right, I'll leave to pass, thank you guys for my advice. We have one more thing, um, you're right, grab this, this is the thing I want to add about phones. Uh, we have a quote, which I'm going to find. I'm gonna try it, I'm gonna. Do you guys all have the next season quote?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, I'm also packing, time to go. Uh, this next season quote is one hundred percent for Neil's DPW. With the addition of a second phone, that second phone will be networked in half the village, often will be used in the main lobby to replace the existing phone, um, as you guys see by the quote, this is a one-time charge of two oh seventy-nine with the recurring monthly of fifty-two oh seven. And this will allow us, once this is offset running here, to get rid of Neil's off the line, which will finish the rise for a considerable amount of money, or, I can't remember, and to be completely voiceover IP, course phone and facts, Neil will commit to that one fact. So I'm looking for motion to approve uh, this purchase for next season. Thank you. Need a second?
Second.
Thank you, uh, again, phone internet, um, we're here, and for the the new phone, I mean, a lot of requirements. Further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close your sentences. Great.
Rob, I have one thing, Dave, Dave Ward reached out to me, he definitely, Dave Ward is all, is wants to be on CR.
Great, um, hearing that, looking for motion to appoint David Forge to the CRRV.
I'll do that.
Thank you, Deb. Thank you, Megan, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, both, sentences. Carries, that means we have four, so we should be actively looking for one more person. I would love a different um, situation person, whatever we can find, to be our fifth, round it off. Great, anything else you guys want to bring up?
Megan, I was just talking, we we was talking about the noise ordinance, um, yeah, when the. Who's this?
Yeah.
But Andy wasn't, he was out from that discussion, as I can, so I just wondered, he had any thoughts on the noise.
Andy, did you hear much of the discussion with UZIC regarding the noise situation?
Well, I heard some of it, uh, good, two, two quick points, one, uh, Dan, I did receive your email uh, of the work you and Deb and Megan have been doing, and that is still in review, so I'll go through that. But some general thoughts on these local noise ordinances, the the more generic they are in terms of what constitutes unreasonable or objectionable noise, the the more general they are, the the more difficult they are to enforce. The more specific they are in terms of decibel levels, uh, they are subject to more direct enforcement, but they'll, they require a lot of more upfront work in terms of equipment, and I and I do know that maybe a noise meter was, was obtained. But if you're really gonna enforce a noise local law or ordinance, you're gonna have to identify the equipment, make sure it's properly calibrated, people are trained to use it, it's used properly. All that proof has to be put together properly to enforce the law or violation of the law. And then obviously, a violation in local court, in your village court, doesn't produce a result in terms of injunctive relief, meaning stop that, you simply get the monetary penalty. So there are clear benefits to having a noise local law, uh, but how this ends up, what form it takes, the enforcement. I'm reviewing those issues, the issue of grandfathering, the whatever businesses are currently, and I'm looking at those issues as well, um, so I think that's the entirety of my comments thus far, I'm still under review.
Thank you.
Yeah, we, we had talked with, we own those businesses, minus just the, the country club, just like I know. We're not, it's not, I would, I would, I would take care of that.
Okay, that's great, great. All right, anything else you guys want to bring? In that case, I'm looking for a motion to enter executive session. This is about the personal matters, no business to be conducted, that's a motion of executive session. Oh, 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 sorry, Kevin.
Maybe service.
What's that?
Maybe service person?
That's, I have not yet, I will speak with uh, both, I have to get the job description out, uh, and then I can both.
Also, I sent out a listing for UZIC, I think I sent it to people, I was a public restorative. Another small village listing, just sounded like our community, so I took parts of that. I didn't send it to you, I sent it to Bobby, I think, uh, to Mayor, Andy, and.
Is this for us to review and get out there?
Uh, well, well, civil service, she says she wants to look at it after we did it.
Oh, so the job description, right, Kevin?
It's kind of a job description, it's more of a listing to put out for. We didn't find out too, you can't have a part-time UZIC officer anymore, a place chief, you have to full time.
Okay.
It's twenty, what, twenty, thirty to thirty-five dollars a week.
Say that again, Kevin?
You have to have, you can't have a part-time UZIC.
He has to work a minimum of thirty-two hours?
Thirty, thirty to thirty-five, something like that.
Okay, um, something else I'd like, I'd also like to do, start collecting. And I don't know if these are public documents or not, but whatever contract, or anything, see what ideas are out there. But again, you probably noticed that, are those public documents?
Yeah, you don't wanna get a lot of them, they're not always up to date, um, but Cornell has the, the public I L R program, it's for a lot of people. They'll go to, that's industrial relations, make a pile, a lot of public sector contracts, I, sometimes they're really out of date.
Okay.
But you can go on the website and see what's out there.
Okay.
Yeah, that's probably the best way.
I'll, I'll try, hopefully, it's also moved down.
Yeah, of course, the other thing you can do, I mean, we can call, I don't know. Thank you, Senator.
Yeah.
All in there, it's, it's UZIC. I don't, I don't think, like Cambridge, I'm still gonna, it's a lot of work for it. No, because like, we, 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 we don't want to.
All right, looking for motion to uh, move to executive session, so personal matter, L was being taken up and questioned. Thank you, Megan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close your sentences. Okay, we are here to move to executive session at nine fourteen, head. Okay, we are first to move to executive session, add on fourteen, thank you very much, Andy, thank you.[1785.41]